All right. Good evening. This is June 1st at 7:00 PM. This is the Committee of the Home Meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the room?
Mr. Barsati?
Present.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
For Ms. Present.
All right. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. At this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? All right. And that brings us to Welcome to Central School by Principal Pete Gatz.
It's great to see everybody back at Central. It's been a while since we've been here. Quite a long time since I've been at our board meeting. So it's been an eventful year, to say the least, for everybody. It's great to have teachers here this evening, too, because the first thing I want to say is thank you to all of you. Thank you to the teachers. It's been a challenging year for everybody. We've come a long way and over a lot of obstacles around and through, in some cases. But it's been a great year and it's been a tiring year, and we've got a couple of days left here. We had Field Day this week at Central. It was moved a little bit because of rain, but it was a great experience for kids with the PTO and Central PE teacher, Patty Dose, put together a great day of activities for kids. Tomorrow, the 5th graders throughout the district have Step Up Day, where they're going to be at Hauser all morning long. So that's a great experience for them. Take a little taste of Junior High before they get there. It's an opportunity to experience the building a little bit and have some time with the teachers and administration there. And obviously, at Central, we have our 5th Grade Awards and traditional clapout happening on Friday at the end of the school day. So again, a great school year and a great experience for everybody. So thank you all, and have a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Gatz. It's good to be back. All right. Are there any board member comments?
I just have a very short one. My daughter is a Central student who's a 3rd grader, and they had a field trip on the Field Day. But I was just talking to Mr. Gatz, and I really appreciate that the PTO, like Ms. Strobel, they managed to give the 3rd graders their own little Field Day. And I thought that was really kind of just inclusive and kind, and we appreciate whoever was involved in that, Ms. Dose. Because, you know, field trip's awesome, but it's hard to weigh, you know, how you deal with those things. But the kids loved it, and I just want to say thank you publicly if I don't get to talk to Ms. Strobel. So it was, they loved it.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly comment as the kind of school year comes to a close. My first full year on the board as well. A whirlwind year, just for me even as a board member. So I can't even imagine our teachers and those and our educators. So I just want to say a heartfelt thank you for an amazing job to all of our teachers present and perhaps listening in, for just an incredible school year navigating continuous new normals, you know, everybody within our district. And last night was the Hauser Junior High and graduation, and it was really special to be a part of that. So of course, to our outgoing students, we wish them the best, and to those graduating from 5th grade and moving into Hauser, wishing them success in this new chapter. So just wanted to take a moment to reflect on that.
Thanks. Well, it's a good night.
Minus the traffic.
Minus the traffic, yes. We shall not speak of the traffic. All right. Anything else? All right. And if not, that brings us to committee reports. First up is Education Committee.
Well, we have a math presentation, so I'll let Ms. Dose introduce everybody that's here. But I was excited to read what they have, so I'll just pass it on to her for the math curriculum review.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'll try and do.
Piece of information that can be shared.
Yes. Thank you so much for listening tonight to our presentation on the proposed new math curriculum for the '22-'23 school year. We, as a math curriculum review team, met and multiple times from November through May, and I am fortunate enough to have part of our committee here with us tonight. So I want to thank Ron Barbercheck, 3rd grade teacher at Hollywood; Daniel Munson, 3rd grade teacher at Ames; Tina Duvie, 4th grade teacher at Ames; Brian Tremmer, 5th grade teacher at Hollywood; and Kim Eddy, one of our advanced learning teachers who teaches at Central and Hollywood. So very happy to have them here tonight, joining me. And if you have specific questions about the curriculum or the pilot, they, some of them have offered to help out with that piece. We also had on the committee Brittany Basic, Michelle Benden, Peggy Collins, Erin Deppi, Carolyn Darianzo, Meg Downs, Lisha Gravara, Kelly Hall, Ashley Camp, Jen Ullman, Sarah Hickey, Kim Heffner, and myself. So well-represented group, representing all of our elementary schools, all grade levels, advanced learners, special education, and our instructional coach also on the team. As we looked at the program, searched for a program, we wanted to make sure that whatever program we chose met the 10 points of our mathematics focus. This would include things like using objects, like face-10 blocks, and then moving from those objects to picture representations of those objects, and moving from that to abstract concepts as students are learning number sense and math thinking. We wanted to make sure that whatever programs we looked at had students using their prior knowledge to solve problems, had them persevering to solve problems, and encouraged students to talk about the math thoughtfully and appropriately challenge other solutions to problems. We also wanted to be sure that the program deepened their understanding through conversation, exploration, and critical thinking. Continuing on with those 10 points of the focus, we wanted to make sure that aligned to our strategic plan, we were promoting student agency of students' mathematical learning by personalizing parts of their own learning. We wanted to have a program that assessed student thinking and exploring the strategies that students are using, and supported our diverse learners, ensuring our students see themselves in their resources. And whatever curriculum we looked at, we wanted to make sure it developed a passion for learning and building math identities, as well as celebrated and rewarded our students' curiosity, creativity, innovation, and experimentation. As I said, as a committee, we met from November through just recently, I think about a week ago. We started in November by identifying the committee members and began our introductory work. And the introductory work included talking about the process we would use for identifying a program, the tools we would use, and non-negotiables that had to happen no matter what program we chose. And those non-negotiables were things like equity for all learners, so that our resources were providing, we had resources that provided for a variety of grouping, supported our EL students, our special education students, our NTSS students, as well as our enriched students. We wanted to make sure the EL supports included materials that were available in Spanish and reinforced academic vocabulary. Our assessments need to be aligned to grade level appropriate standards and provide multiple ways for students to show understanding. And we wanted user-friendly materials that included books and manipulatives that were easy to navigate for not only our students, but also our staff and our family members. We wanted to ensure technology was easily integrated to support and enhance our student learning, but not replace instruction. And we wanted culturally responsive practices, including promoting high expectations for all students and promoting opportunities for collaboration and cooperative learning and connecting students' lives to their communities. We also looked at mathematical practices, the standard mathematical practices. And there are eight of these mathematical practices that we wanted to make sure were infused throughout a program. Those eight practices include making sense of problems and persevering in solving them, reasoning abstractly and quantitatively, making viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others, modeling with mathematics, so with manipulatives being able to show your thinking, using appropriate tools strategically, attending to precision, and looking for and make use of structure. We did all of that groundwork in November, and then December through February, we began reviewing five programs that were identified based off of criteria that we had already looked at, that I, along with our MCMI math coach, had already looked at to ensure it was going to be standards-aligned, to ensure that it was a program that was rated highly. And so from December to February 22nd, from December through February 2022, we reviewed those five programs. And the five programs we initially reviewed were Bridges Mathematics, Elestrative Mathematics, Everyday Mathematics 4, I Ready Classroom Mathematics, and then Math and Focus, the 2020 edition, so the updated edition of the curriculum we currently have. We utilized a rubric that looked at those non-negotiables to determine which programs we felt would, we should have vendors come in and present deeper on. And we identified I Ready Classroom Mathematics and Everyday Mathematics 4 as the two curriculum resources we would have vendors come present. In February, those two vendor companies came and presented and shared about their program, gave us a deeper dive into each program. And from there, we felt that they both were worth piloting. So in March, teachers, classroom teachers, piloted Everyday Mathematics for three weeks. They had a half-day professional development session with an Everyday Mathematics representative so that they knew a surface level of what they would be using with their classrooms. They identified a unit that was similar to the unit their counterparts were teaching so that students weren't missing out on any content, and they piloted Everyday Math for three weeks in March. When we returned from spring break, they switched and piloted for three weeks I Ready Classroom Mathematics. Again, we had had a half-day professional development session before they launched into that when we returned from spring break. And then they had again identified a unit that was similar to what their counterparts were teaching and taught for three weeks out of I Ready Classroom Mathematics. I have to give a huge thank you to our classroom teachers who piloted the program because it's not easy to just jump into the middle of a curriculum resource. The language is different, the resources are different, the structure of lessons are different, and then piloting two different programs one after the other is also a challenge for all students. But I think about our primary kids who went from Everyday Mathematics structure to I Ready Classroom structure, and it's just different. And our piloting teachers rolled with it and did a great job with it, and our students did a great job as well. After the piloting ended, in the third week of April, about the third week of April, we came together as a team, met and talked about what worked, what didn't work, where we still had questions. We also, after each pilot, had rated the program based on those non-negotiables I had mentioned, and had looked at those non-negotiables. So at the end of the Everyday Mathematics pilot, we came together and we ranked Everyday Mathematics based on those non-negotiables: equity, EL supports, assessment, user-friendly technology, and culturally responsive practices. And from there, the ratings were from, you could get anything from a 1 to a 6, with 6 being the highest, and you could see the different ratings for each of those areas for Everyday Mathematics, with a total score of 26 out of 36. And then after the I Ready pilot in April, we did the same thing, and you can see that I Ready scored 30 out of 36. We did, though, then have more conversations after the pilot in April and just talked about it qualitatively rather than looking at the quantitative numbers. And again, talked about what worked, where we still had some questions, where we still had maybe some concerns. Not concerns because it was a bad program, but concerns because we didn't know if there were pieces that would meet student needs. So for instance, maybe at the primary level, being concerned that it might be too teacher-directed and less student discourse, student conversation. There were some concerns about how would, with one program, how would we structure small group instruction in mathematics? What would be the resources for that? I Ready Classroom offered resources. Everyday Mathematics did not offer specifically resources for small group instruction. So having those questions, we decided that what would help maybe would be to go observe in a classroom. And so in April, we set up two observations, one for Everyday Mathematics at Burley Elementary School in CPS, and then one for I Ready Classroom Mathematics at Whittier Primary School in Berkeley. And we went and observed, about three to four members of the team went and observed in those classes. And we came back, and they were great lessons, and we learned a lot from them, but we were still kind of left with questions. And so I then met with both representatives, brought the questions that were still lingering to those representatives, and following those conversations, the conversations as a team when we came back together one last time last week, we did decide to recommend I Ready Classroom Mathematics. So why I Ready Classroom Mathematics? Materials for whole class instruction were something that was thought highly of. We liked the structure of a lesson. It does, the structure is the same and consistent throughout. There are materials for small group personalized learning that allow for reteaching, reinforcing, and also extensions for those students who are working above the level that the lesson teaches. I Ready Classroom Mathematics has, throughout all of its lessons, the majority of its lessons, it has a conversation, has a strategy called Try, Discuss, Connect. And through that, this routine provides students with opportunities to persevere in problem-solving, evaluate one another's thinking, compare different math solutions that their classroom peers might have had, and also apply strategy, these different strategies, to their own work. I Ready Classroom Mathematics also provides ways to connect to community and cultural responsiveness. So for instance, in a lesson about teen numbers in the teacher's manual, it talks about encouraging non-native speakers to count, to tell the class how to count from 10 to 20 in their language, and then explains to the teacher how to draw out that tens are used in like Spanish or Japanese as well, and showing how it connects, English connects to the students in the classroom's language, native languages as well. Might also, for that teen, for the lesson on teen numbers, might also say, explore how teen numbers are used by librarians, or bankers, or veterinarians. It might say, look for someone in your community and interview them about how they use teen numbers. So the lessons throughout I Ready Classroom Mathematics are making specific instructions, guidance for teachers on how they can connect to the community and to their students' lives. I Ready Classroom Mathematics has learning games that provide activities to strengthen fluency, number sense, and conceptual understanding. And similar to Dreambox, I Ready Mathematics has its own digital component that personalizes instruction. So we would no longer utilize Dreambox. We would not renew our Dreambox subscription, and we would utilize the I Ready personalized instructional app. It takes about 10 minutes a day to provide practice on needed skills for the students, and that practice, that 10 minutes of practice, also provides our teachers with information for their small group instruction. It's important to see who else is putting their faith, their money into a curriculum resource. And so there are a number of districts throughout Illinois looking at I Ready Classroom Mathematics or already using I Ready Classroom Mathematics. Here's a small sample of districts. I pulled, a couple of these are whiskey districts, districts that we compare from the West Suburban Consortium that we are a member of. So Hillside School District 93 is a whiskey district, and Hinsdale 181 is a whiskey district. They are both also West 40 districts. Berkeley School District 87 is a West 40 school district. And then I also included Naperville 203 and Northbrook Lynnview School District 30 in this comparison or in this chart because they're also high-performing districts like us, and wanted to make sure that we were looking at a well-cross-represented sample of districts who are utilizing it. Another thing that's important to note is that Hinsdale 181 and Northbrook School District 30 actually moved from Math and Focus as well to I Ready Classroom Math. So two other districts who noticed they needed some type of change, and it ended up going from what we also had to what we're looking at for the '22-'23 school year. So when thinking about the money or looking at the money, you have in front of you a chart that tells you for, we received a three-year quote and a one-year quote. And when looking at the three-year quote, we end up saving a significant amount of money that makes it worth going with a three-year quote for a program. And so you can see that for three, for the '22-'23 school year, '23-'24, and '24-'25, we would pay a total of about $176.5. I say "about" because the manipulative cost is an estimate right now. If it goes up, it shouldn't go up too much, but I do say "about" because we're right now finalizing the manipulative costs. Instead of buying, usually math programs will allow you to buy a kit of manipulatives for every teacher, but we already have manipulatives in our classroom. So instead of buying all brand-new kits and having way too many of something, the teachers are actually inventorying what they have in their classes, and we are going to order what we need. And so that's why that's an estimate right now, because we're only ordering what we need. Because of the piloting materials, there are things that we don't have to purchase for these three years. And then also because of the three-year quote, you receive a significant savings as well. So I have for you the savings that we received by signing a three-year quote. And then what that, that's a combined saving, the $127.5 is a combined saving. So I also pulled out like just some materials alone. If we were to go with a one-year quote, we would have $8,400 for the next two years that we would have to pay also each year out if we went with a one-year quote. So that is why we're recommending I Ready Classroom Mathematics and the cost behind it. I thank you for your time, and if you have questions for me or for our teachers, we are open. If you don't?
No. How did the, so I saw on one of the slides it said classroom observations, but I'm just kind of curious, like how did the student, like was there student feedback, or was it just observing how the students engaged with it? And like, was there a big difference between the two and how the students at various levels did adjust to the material?
So I went to both observations, and then we have one person here who went to one of the observations with me as well. Kim Eddy went to the Everyday Mathematics classroom observation. We were observing for student engagement. We were observing for ease of teaching and as well as like use of manipulatives, and just those pieces that we knew were part of our own focus in District 96. Both lessons were very strong lessons. At the Everyday Mathematics class, it was a 6th grade classroom. Kids were engaged and talking and working through problems. That particular school does not use the digital component, so we weren't able to see some of the questions we had about the digital component of Everyday Mathematics. We weren't able to see that address, but we did see what we, we did see the kids engaging. We had asked about small group instruction because that is a direction we're moving in here in District 96, and she was explaining that she doesn't necessarily utilize small group instruction because she has the kids working in small groups when they're doing their whole group lessons. And she also had a co-teacher who would help the students, too. So she was able to meet needs that way. We don't have co-teachers the way she does in our classrooms, so that would not necessarily be a structure we could utilize. We would still need to look at how we would meeting individual needs. When we went to the primary class, the first grade classroom at Berkeley to see I Ready Classroom Mathematics, it was a little bit more teacher-directed than we had hoped for, but as we talked about it, one of the things we realized is it's kind of like sometimes like a teacher observation where you take that lesson that you think is going to give the best performance, and it wasn't really a lesson, it wasn't a true I Ready Classroom lesson. And so because of that, we realized that there are certain structures that we missed out on seeing because she didn't just go with the flow of what she was normally going to teach. So we had to take that into consideration also. But the kids loved it. They were excited to do it. The discourse was great. Berkeley has a higher Hispanic population, and so we were able to see some of the supports that are put in place for academic language there as well. But what we ended up discussing when we came back together last week is that while it was great to see the instruction at the different schools, we all left kind of like it didn't answer the questions that we hoped it would.
And is some of the difference just the way that we, like, I think I heard you just say like, that's not how we do things? So some of that is just how we've chosen to set up a classroom and things? And so which one of these best suits? Like you said, neither one, like, they're not bad. It's just which one best suits how we've decided to instruct students is really kind of what it came down to?
Yes. Yeah.
Just had a question. I appreciate the examples you gave with how the, like, I Ready Classroom provides ways to connect with the community and cultural responsiveness. Just on the program criteria review, like the ranking went to six. It's like the only one that's ranked, you know, slightly lower than Everyday Mathematics. So I'm just curious, like, perhaps what Everyday Mathematics offered in terms of culturally responsive practices that seem, you know, that was rated a little higher? Is there any way to kind of, I don't know, tweak or modify or adjust I Ready Classroom to bring it up even a little, you know, further?
I, without looking at the tool, can't remember off the top of my head, but I am going to, and if you guys can't, that's fine. But any of you remember off the top of your head what made everything?
Can you show the slide again?
It's just one, it's just the only one that's like a slight outlier by one.
It's more versus less.
More versus less. So I was just curious what it's.
Was it the homewics, some of the languages?
But I ready because. I don't think any of us can really remember.
It wasn't that late, it's, it was my margin of error. Makes sense. But no, I appreciate hearing the examples that the I Ready one does provide in that particular space. And then you also mentioned like drink, getting rid of or not renewing Dreambox? Like, would that be, I don't know what we'd pay right now for that. So is that totaled into this cost?
It's not totaled into the savings and into this cost. The removing of Dreambox is not totaled into this cost. I can work with Jim and Mahala to pull that out and send that to the board. And then also, I have notes from all of our discussions, obviously, so I can also send you the answer to your other question about the cultural responsive piece, just so you know that you have that answer as well. Thank you.
A quick question. So you had mentioned you were looking at Math and Focus 2020 in the beginning, and obviously pursued not to look at that any further. Any like feedback on just like what are the, what are the changes from the current Math and Focus to I Ready? Like what are the big, like the big wins we're getting with this?
The biggest win is that it's aligned to the grade level standards. So Math and Focus was designed to be aligned off standards because it was looking at how it could challenge students. And so a lot of the standards that were being taught at 4th grade might have been 5th grade standards, taught in 2nd grade were 3rd or 4th grade standards. So what we were finding in implementing Math and Focus is that our kids just were not developmentally ready for what was being taught. So kids weren't doing well necessarily, and then you were saying they were Tier 2 or Tier 3, but it's not that they didn't know. It's just that they weren't at that point yet. So the biggest, biggest win that we're getting in moving to a different curriculum resource is that it's completely aligned to standards. The other win is that we're not going to have to rewrite the assessments. Berkeley's been implementing this for three years, and they haven't adjusted their assessments at all. It truly assesses what students are being taught. And then another win is the personalized pathways that we're able to get through checkpoint assessments, through the I Ready personalized learning digital assessment. It provides the teachers with on-time, at-that-moment data about how their students are doing. It will tell them if they're performing above grade level, on grade level, a year below, or two or more years below, so that we can help form groups. It tells them, these kids should be in this group, working on this, and here's what you can do to work on this. So it also gives them the resources for those small group instruction pieces as well, which we weren't getting from Math and Focus.
But there's still opportunities to, to say a student needs more challenge in this program. There are opportunities for those pathways as well, too?
Yes. So through that digital component, it will challenge students who are above grade level or at the upper end of on-grade level. And then the teacher materials also provide extension activities in each lesson, as well as extension projects that they can do for units.
Right. And from my understanding, I think you had already mentioned this at previous meeting, we were going to have to, if we say we stayed with Math and Focus, we were going to have to spend money to update materials and curriculum anyway?
We were. And so if we stayed with Math and Focus for one year, we would have had to pay $105.7 for one year. So that would have been one year of digital licenses for all the teachers, all the students, and then updating the materials that we would have needed. And then we'd have to, the following year, pay for new consumables, which we're not going to have to do with the three-year quote for I Ready, and then continue that consumable piece for Math and Focus each year. The other thing with I Ready's three-year quote is if they make any changes within that three years, you get the resources for free. They just automatically provide those resources, which is great because they're currently kindergarten first grade, working to incorporate more student-centered discourse in the kindergarten first grade resources, because that's what they've heard from teachers as a need. So when that's finished at the end of next year, they will just give those resources to us.
So it feels like this isn't really like an unexpected expense that was coming up. It's part of the review. We were going to have to spend money either way, so why not find a tool that meets our needs better, is what I'm understanding.
Right. Exactly.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I feel the same way. I think that's why we do the five-year review. It's just because, and with the publishers, new things are coming out. And I think I had heard with the Math in Focus, it wasn't quite as many opportunities for review. It would just kind of plow through the material, which, which might be good for some, but not for all. So I am happy to hear about the opportunities for enrichment. And then I was going to ask, how do you see this blending with Carnegie when they get to the middle school? Because we have fifth, that fifth grade, that awkward transition from, whether it's math testing or whatever, that they're changing again to a new set of materials and so.
So one of the things with it being heavy, a heavy focus of discourse and student discussion, I know Carnegie is the same way. So it will continue to encourage our students to talk about the math thinking, talk about the conceptual learning as they move and transition to Carnegie and utilize that same type of routine. I think with any program, you know, Mr. Trimmer and I were just talking about how it is unfortunate Carnegie doesn't have an elementary series. Otherwise, that's something we probably would have reviewed also. So no matter what we pick, because we're currently utilizing Carnegie, we're going to have that transition from one program to another. We will have to continue to review where those gaps are that we've noticed in data and work then, as we're learning iReady Classroom, to ensure we're addressing those gaps that we're noticing. But the biggest thing is the discourse and the conversation will lead you to Carnegie as well.
I'm sorry, I said this before, but I remember being a junior-high parent and having Mr. Harvallis have the parents do the discourse. It is a different way to learn, but it's really cool when you do it. So I'm happy to see that the children, when they're younger, get an opportunity to talk through, whether it's, because there are many different ways to solve a problem, and I kind of like that one child might have one way, but you can solve it this other way, and they may not have thought of that. So I appreciate the discourse comment, because that's what they're doing, as far as I remember, in the sixth and seventh grade. Thanks.
So dumb non-teacher question here. What are manipulatives?
That is a great question. Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you for asking. Those are hands-on materials that we might use to help teach lessons. So I talked about base ten blocks throughout the presentation, and those are blocks that are either small cubes that represent the ones digit in numbers or a rod that has 10 of those small cubes connected together that represents the tens place, or a flat that has 10 of those rods that represents the hundreds place. So it shows students place value, it shows them number sense. And then when you start talking about addition, subtraction, and regrouping and carrying, you are able to break apart or regroup the numbers so that you have, if you have 14 of those small cubes, you can trade in 10 to get one of those rods that's a 10 piece. So base ten blocks are manipulatives. Spinners, if you're doing probability and you have a spinner to teach probability, that's a manipulative. Fraction circles or fraction bars. Trying to think of all the things I just asked you guys. Coins.
Yeah, just all that stuff that they move around.
I was just, I was just thinking, like, while you're inventorying, I was like, I might have some at my house. I don't know if you want parents to be inventorying or give back. I'm sure give back.
During the pandemic, the real downtime, we, we had that sent home. And I, so we were able to see some of those aerial things that happened.
I would say keep them.
I gave it back.
Because your kids can use them for their homework when they're doing work at home.
All right, great. Definitely get that now. So another question, when you were talking about the one versus three-year quote, so I was thinking what the one-year was kind of a one-year license, but then you had said something later that made me think, well, maybe not, that that's not a one-year license. I don't know, could, can you elaborate on the difference between the one and three-year quotes a little more?
So the three-year quote has everything a one-year quote has, and we just don't have to pay for it again until three years from now. So a one-year quote would have the digital license for both students and for teachers. It has the teacher, for this first round, it'll have the teacher additions that we would need that moving forward unless we had, like, a new section. But then we're already, you know, we anticipate life's new section this year, so we're already ordering for that that's included in this quote. It includes all the student materials. But what it also includes is what's called a work text. And that work test text is what we know as a workbook. And so each year, we would have to buy more workbooks, because the students are using them and use them up and be sent home, because they've been written in. So every year, you have to re-buy, you have to buy more of those. And so for the three-year quote, we won't have to buy any of those. It'll just come to us at, I give the numbers at the end of the year, and they'll supply those for us through the three-year quote. If we did a one-year quote, that set materials of 4,200 each year, we would have to purchase the digital license for another year, as well as any consumables.
Okay. And I wonder what was, the only quote we received from iReady? Or did we receive anything similar for Everyday Math?
We did receive a quote for Everyday Mathematics. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can provide that for you.
This ballpark, was it, was it above or below or?
It was above.
Okay. All right.
Did you have a question, Joel?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
I saw you raise your hand earlier.
I just figured to be patient. Dan actually answered or asked the question I had about the cost in terms of what that cost is made of. So the consumables and the licenses seem like they add significantly to, that's what I was afraid of. That's our technological world. With, when you mentioned technology in the criteria, you said it was adding to and not replacing books. Does this mean that, does the adding to that covers the iReady personalized instruction?
Yes.
And then in the criteria, user-friendly was the biggest difference between Everyday Math and iReady? Is there, I'm seeing a definite, what does that mean?
Do you guys want to talk about that?
Could you elaborate?
Sure. I don't know, anybody. I mean, we all felt that the, both programs provided something for the teachers to project, for the students to follow along what's in their book. We found the Everyday Math one to be very, very cumbersome, not always matching exactly what the students are seeing. And it just was, it was interfering with the lessons as opposed to enhancing the lessons. Where the iReady Mathematics one was much more streamlined, much more in tune with what the students are seeing. Don't I feel okay with that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly, I know the pilots were very short, you know, three weeks with the students. Were there, was there any feedback from the kids?
They loved iReady. My class, they loved it. They voted iReady can stop.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I had a lot of feedback. I actually just flat-out asked them, do you like to do math this way? And I heard from a variety of kids from the high achievers, who said it allowed them to go deeper and it's got a better understanding of the concepts. And then from the really reluctant ones, who actually were, a lot of times shut down, were actually not shutting down, actually the different ways that you could solve the problem on the try, they were actually getting to go up to the board and put their solutions on the board for it, which was a big confidence booster for them.
That's great.
Mostly serious question here. So with, with iReady, are, are parents going to be able to help their kids do their homework?
That is a great question, Dan.
I have a thought.
They will, because the, what I found was the pieces that we use for homework, they are more skills practice, instead of asking them to redo the concept. And there is an opportunity for a couple of different pieces to go home as homework. So I think it's up to the teacher to assess, because they mirror the lesson. The practice pages mirror the lesson. So if a teacher is confident that kids have mastered that, they can give that to them for homework. So I, I felt it was, one of the pieces where it's more skill practice, which just, the kids tend to.
There's also a family letter that goes home every unit or every?
No, every lesson.
Every lesson. That goes home, that engages families in what's being taught as well, and will ask families to do some type of activity that relates to, relates to what's going to be taught. And that activity is, it's not a huge activity, it's just like conversational.
Just to clarify, when we say lesson, we had, this was, this was a terminology issue. We think of a lesson as what you do as every day. They call that, in, in iReady Mathematics, they call that a session.
Okay.
So a lesson is a group of sessions around a certain time.
That's, that's different than I'm used to.
Three to five sessions per lesson. So it's not getting a family letter every single day.
That's what I was, when you said that, I was like. I don't have to get that age anymore, but wow, that sounds like a lot.
That was a terminology switch for us, just because we're so used to, oh, our daily lesson. But, oh, no, it's the session today, and it's part of this lesson, which is part of this unit.
I wonder why they did that, I'm just curious. Just to make things a little bit.
And does that come with some of the terminology? Because I know, like, just for me, which I think is a great question, like, I was trying to help the way that I learned math, which is the same thing, but said differently. And I kept reverting back, and they would keep correcting me. And I'm just like, whatever, it's the same thing. Does the jargon or whatever, kind of like, for helping parents kind of come along in, in some capacity?
Does that, is that kind of like, I'm going to include in those family letters?
It's in the letter, it's in the journal. They could take it home.
That was a very serious question, Dan.
I might have heard a comedian or two quote, they can't help their kids with their homeworks.
Yeah.
That's why it's mostly serious. Honestly, I'm pleasantly surprised with the answer. I was figuring the answer was no. Anything else?
Just, I had a couple of things on the cost. I don't want to harp on cost too much, but it just, it seems like this is quite a bit of savings. And I'm just wondering, so the DreamBox is not included, so that's added on. The Math in Focus upgrade, you said, was like 105. So is that, so is the 127 savings, is that from what we have today? Not including the 105? So is there an even bigger gap? Or is the 105?
Yes. That 127 is not including.
That's what we pay today and what we'll pay tomorrow, not plus. So like, if we stay with what we have, we're going to increase our cost 105.
Correct.
And if we go with this, we go down 127. So this is really a 232,000-dollar savings?
You lost me in that.
So the 105 is what our upgrade cost would be?
Yes.
So is that?
What we are going, what we would pay for iReady Classroom Math is 176.5. That 127 savings is already pulled out.
That is included, okay.
So is that 127, not, sorry to cut you off, but that, is that 127? So if we did year-to-year, is this essentially saying we're spending 300, we'd be spending 300,000? Like, 176 plus 127, which I know doesn't come up to 300,000 exactly?
Yes, essentially, yes.
Because I got math teachers here, but I'm rounding.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
So it's just the DreamBox that's not included?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
This is a more general question, but is it, is it typical that there's such economies of scale when we buy curriculum over these longer time periods?
Yes. They, yes, when you buy multi-year contracts, when you do multi-year contracts, they'll give significant decreases the more years you pay out, to encourage you to do a multi-year contract. Most companies, though, we will pay, we'll, we'll say, yes, we'll use, we'll do the three years, but we're going to pay July of every year. This is different in that we do have to pay upfront. iReady Classroom Mathematics will not let you pay year-to-year-to-year. You do have to pay for multi-year contracts upfront. So that's where this one is different. But yes, it is normal for our vendors to offer significant discounts when you, the more years you sign up for.
Just to get you in the door and get that multi-year commitment for those licenses.
Is iReady a newer company by chance?
It's been out for at least about five years, but it's picking up steam, and more districts are buying into it. But I know, like, when Nate and I had started, they were, they were around then, because when we were looking at DreamBox, one of the other programs that I had reviewed was their iReady personalized learning pathway. It just at that time didn't make sense for us to use that along with Math in Focus that we had had.
For the PD, the professional development, are they, are they coming in to train? Are they sending a rep for everybody? Or are we training the trainers? Are we training?
They're sending a rep for everybody. And that's another great thing about iReady's programming, is that their professional learning is very hands-on. So they will send a rep in the beginning for everybody, for K-5 teachers to, and special education teachers, they'll, everyone to learn about the program, all the initial pieces. They'll come back and probably around our October Institute Day, because then teachers will have had their hands in it for about six weeks, and will start to have more questions. And then we'll also have the data from the first use of the personalized pathway, the iReady class, the iReady digital piece. And they'll talk about how you utilize that data, how to read that data. And then they come back, and we personalize it based on our needs. So for that third visit, I would talk to the teachers, and through conversations at different meetings, we would talk about where there's a need, what questions we still have, and personalize that learning for that. They also have professional learning for the administrators included in that package, so that our principals are learning about the programs as well, so that they're aware of what they're seeing in their classrooms and able to support their teachers, too. And then there's, there is asynchronous professional learning program that's included in it, too.
Okay, thanks.
And Angela, I think we talked in April about the availability for iReady is way more than Everyday Math. So that was a bonus for the teachers. That was something important, I think.
Well, that's good to hear. I mean, not that I wouldn't love to hand it off to the people that, you know, piloted and did it, but it's a lot, it's a lot for them, and it's better, I think, for everyone to hear it. In my, my personal opinion, for everybody to have a peek, because, you know, how are the administrators supposed to answer parent questions if they don't understand?
And as great as our pilot teachers were, I don't think any of them would feel comfortable providing professional learning.
And it's a lot. It's, well, it is a lot. No, I, yeah, no, I've been there. It's a lot to have to take on, so I'm really happy to hear that.
Was the training, just for those three weeks of pilot, with better training than?
Really? Good.
The session was stronger?
That's good. Good, thanks.
Did you feel that it was easier to learn? Or was it just better training? Or both?
It was easier to use.
Which kind of probably falls under the user friend, like, does all that just fall into the user-friendly bucket?
And it's hard to compare, like, easier to learn or not, because a lot, a number of the teachers who are on the committee have used Everyday Mathematics, like an older version of Everyday Mathematics. So they had some foundational knowledge of Everyday Math structure and how it works and how to teach it going into this.
Yeah, do you all remember we used to use Everyday Math? Like, when my oldest was in high school, now we used to use that at Central. So it's those of us that have helped, yeah. So it's interesting to see how they have a background, but they've chosen this other, other piece.
I just want to, I want to thank Angela for her leadership with this. I know she sweated this decision a lot. There were days I'd walk by her, and she's like, ah. You know, so I know she really, really analyzed, took a lot of feedback, took those extra trips and visits to look at the use of these programs in action with teachers and students. Also want to thank this committee for, again, this is another, just, I think, tremendous example of the work that kind of forged on in the midst of a really challenging year. And in particular, I think, when I heard that teachers were piloting this program, I know it, I think on some level, it did me so much good around, like, wait, like, people are really challenged by everything going on this year, and yet they're willing to try a new math, you know, curriculum sort of in the flow of their regular instruction, kind of when, when you said it in April. So it was not an easy time at all. It is not something that teachers typically do in a certain school year. So thank you all for the pilot work. Thank you for the committee work. Angela, thank you for your leadership, for all of you who are functioning as teacher leaders and really a commitment to seeing improvements for our District 96 children. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any other questions for Angela? Otherwise, I think we'll pass it off to finance if, you know.
And this will come back on the board agenda for formal approval at the June Board of Education meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. As Sherry mentioned, finance is up next.
Yes. So, thanks, Dan. I wanted to, as we all talked, we looked at, we've been looking at what this is going to cost, the facilities work is going to cost. And so just wanted to sort of touch quickly on the memo that Jim put together for this. As you can see, like, the memo highlights in February, we made a $5.5 million transfer. And we need to make an additional, we're looking to make an additional $4 million transfer. The one thing that I want to point out in this. The one thing that I want to point out in this memo that needs to be, that is really crucial, is that we are currently, we are over, we are, we've already exceeded our revenue expectations by $772,000. That is key, because that's going to, if you, when you look at the long-term projections, that's going to increase our fund balance by 7.7 million dollars going into 2031. The expenses, we've always been pretty good about the expenses, but we've not, we've sort of always hit those expenses. They've been pretty accurate. However, the revenue has always been sort of, we've always undercut the revenue that we expect. And that will be, you can see that then in the following chart. So what I asked Jim to do is, there are two charts in here that you can take a look at. One, I actually have to pull this up so I can see it here a little bit better. One is what we've been doing in the past. And so when you look at the, what, and when you look at it, we have in the, what we've been calling a very conservative. It doesn't take in consideration the revenue overruns that we've been experiencing. And so when you look at, when you take in consideration all the projects that we're doing, so the Central Hauser Campus, the Blythe Park, the auditorium for the lighting. This is where we're, this is conservatively where we'll end up. We'll end up in 2031 at just under 40% of our reserves. However, as I indicated earlier, we've always been putting in more money than we have. And so we've been putting aside, essentially, the last six-plus years, 2 billion plus more in revenue in our fund balance. Okay? Because of that, I asked Jim to start being a little more realistic in our projections. And so the next, the slide on the last page talks about that 7.7 million dollars that I was talking about. So if you take a look at that, we are, in 2031, we take into consideration the more realistic expectation. And that's assuming only 772,000 extra this year, which revenues don't go down. So it's going to carry forward. But we're not assuming that we're going to get additional revenues either. So we're just basically taking a snapshot in time of today. And that's going to bring us to about 48% of revenue. I mean, 48% of fund balance. So the way, my opinion is that all these projects are essential. And there is, and all these projects are essential. And so essentially, there is, like, when you take a look at, like, the community, I mean, the communities are sort of expecting, I guess from a finance perspective, there is really no reason we shouldn't be doing any of these projects, from a financial perspective. The community sort of expects this, we provide a high-quality education. Many of these projects, these are not like nice, nice projects, niceties. These are essentially essential. We're bringing our, our Central Hauser, I mean, the auditorium up to more current standards. We're taking care of the field that continually floods. We're moving forward with a two-section school. These are the things that the community needs, these are the things that the community sort of expects us to do. And these aren't extravagant, like I was saying. And so from a finance, there is like really essentially no financial reason why we should not be doing any of these projects. Now, what I would like to sort of say, though, if there is concern about finances, then we need to start talking about the policy that we have for 40%. Our policy, our thoughts on debt and our thoughts on referendum. Because financially, right now, there's no reason to do this.
To do what?
To do all these projects.
Oh, I thought you were, for a minute, I thought you were. The first second, I thought you were referring to the percentage. Okay, thanks.
So does anyone have questions on the projections or?
Jim, could you?
Have a seat at the table, Jim.
Please, please join us. So I guess, and I definitely appreciate what David's saying. I'm just wondering now, your inclination, since you've been here with us, is to provide the more conservative projection. I'm wondering, how do we, how do we get to the realistic, or what we're calling realistic here, I guess? Is that, is that something you normally would do? Or is that, how do you feel about that?
Well, I take the approach that instead of always putting a couple million in a fund balance at the end of the year, or a million at least, that I want to, I can't hit the number exactly, but I want, what's the number I would pick that I think we have just as much chance of going over as going under? And that's what I try to do with the realistic ones. So we have, we already have this additional tax revenue that is over budget for this year. We have a month to go. And the tax levy always goes up, so it's going to go up from that point. So we can count on that amount to 10 years out. So that's why I would adjust the projections up by that amount 10 times out.
Okay, now I get it, so 7.2 million over 10 years, essentially. So that's 720,000 times 10.
It's one of those things that keeps going. We're like, one project, that's a one-time.
Yeah, are there any other assumptions that are included in the realistic? Whether it's CPI or staff increases or?
I didn't redo everything, so when I, when we have the budget update and then the next audit, that's kind of my starting point.
Yeah.
Doing everything, but these are things that we know are different. And what kind of drove this is the new costs for the projects when the bids came in and estimates were updated. And so at that point, well, simple, let's see how the revenue is doing and arriving. So I looked to see, you know, being over 700,000. I didn't want to just put the negative adjustment in there when I know there's a positive adjustment that more than offsets it.
Do you see any extension, and I don't know if Martha knows this, for the ESRS money over the next year or two?
Extension of the timeline or extension of more money coming?
Well, both. When you can use it. Is it as limited as we had thought before? Or are there any other additional funds to be heard of? I haven't heard any of the additional ones, but I was curious about the timing.
Yeah, I've heard of the number changing.
But we have heard that they may extend the timeline for use. Partly, some of the thing I've heard is a lot of districts are using like HVAC upgrades and just supply chain labor shortages, et cetera. They haven't been able to do the work that they had anticipated. So I think we'll see an extension of the timeline, but I don't think we'll see more dollars.
But there's talk of that.
Yeah, I realize that's not, you know, a huge percentage of what we do. I just thought it was interesting if it would make an impact on something from the facilities or the way that we use it.
How much do we have left?
Sorry?
How much of that do we have left? I thought we did a pretty good job of using.
A pretty good job, yeah.
Get your report to see where we're at, but I know we have over a million in that budget.
Yeah, I thought it was.
For next year.
Kind of significant, but yeah.
We talked about reserving really the Blythe Park, a multipurpose room.
800,000.
Sort of extend its space, sort of fits within the realm of ESRS expenditure.
Right, right. Yeah, I think you had mentioned that one, yeah.
So is the, is the 772 for this year, is that just of how conservative we got? Because I know we were all very concerned, or just, we didn't know what it was going to look like. And now that things are kind of hopefully somewhat normal, is that just, okay, let's go back to normal? Or?
Well, it never got as bad as we thought it might. The money might have been delayed a little bit.
Yeah.
People paid their taxes a little later.
Yeah.
But it, it always comes in the, you know, 98.5%.
Yeah. Because I know, I remember that first year, you were pretty surprised. I can't remember how far down we went, but I remember we had a very long discussion.
We were down like 95%.
Yeah.
I just think, it was cautious.
Yep.
Then we put all that money away at the end of the year or so.
Right.
If I, you know, if I'm trying to hit it, that on, I probably wouldn't have gone that far, but that's anywhere the committee was.
But is that, is that the sole cause of the difference? Is we just were very, very conservative and it just turned out that way? Or is there like, because we don't have a lot of new construction and stuff like that. So like, was there other revenue sources that came in? Or is it mainly just?
It's the number I back into.
Yeah, okay.
So I figure out all the expenses and then say, well, what would the revenue have to do? If I know it's going to go up 2.5%, but I only need it to go up 1.5%, then I would use that number
Gotcha.
and then make everyone happy at the end with adding a fund balance. But it's hard to plan when, when you don't spell that out at the beginning.
I think the one thing I might add to David's comments is I think, isn't there a statute or something that says you can't go below 30? I know we're below, I remember having that conversation at one point. Or what is it, standard is like 33 or 30 or something?
No, I think it's actually 20%.
20?
Yeah.
I know, I know we're well above whatever the standard is. In addition to that.
ISB requires us to have a, I think it's 25.
Is that what it ISB, okay.
Yeah, you get the full reading for a fund balance at 25%.
Okay. So we're substantially over that and we're barely going under in 10 years.
In 10 years.
Which is difficult to project, but most districts project five years out.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's a guess. It is an element of educated guessing when you're talking about 10 years out. Because no one would have estimated COVID or now there's talk of recession or what have you.
Right.
Right. And you assume 2% for inflation and it's not a risk.
So one thing about that, having the fund balances, we know that Cook County's tax collection is likely to be somewhat disastrous this year. So, and you and I have spoken about that a little bit.
Right.
Do we have any guesses from your contacts in the financial, school financial world, about how much of a delay there is going to be?
The estimate I heard is up to six months delayed.
Okay, so six months delay essentially means we can cover the delay with the money we have on hand.
Right.
Whereas if we had only 20%, we would be able to cover half of the delay. And then for the, no one is going to make up that revenue except through us doing short-term bonds, correct? If we had some other, let's say we had some other district that had a very low fund balance. So they would spend that out while they're waiting for the county to collect their taxes. And then they're still spending because they're still employing staff.
Right.
And so they have to cover that via other means.
Yep.
And so what I'm saying is, the 40% is actually very beneficial to us when untoward things happen.
Yes.
So that's my long way of saying I really wouldn't support dropping the fund balance. Because there are things that happen in this world and those are equally unpredictable.
No, and I guess that's where I'm sort of trying to go with this, is that from, from what we're looking at today and what we're trying to do today, we need to do it. There's, there's no reason we shouldn't be doing what we're, what we're looking to do. And with this, within the scope that we've looked at to do this, and too. I guess the question, though, is, if there is hesitation about doing this because something might be costing too much, because we're worried that in 10 years, in 10 years, which is, is a guess, I mean, a real guess, that we may fall below 40%, then we need to, the discussion needs to be something different than whether or not we should do this. The discussion needs to be fund balance, our opinions on debt. I mean, we have no debt in this community. I mean, our school is debt-free. And then we also need to talk about, like, do, I mean, 10 years out, when was the last time we went for referendum? I mean, I'm not saying we go for referendum. There's no just legal, there is no rational justification ever go for referendum right now. But if we're looking 10 years out, that'd be, what, 30 years? Longer before, since the last time we went for referendum? When was the, I mean, so we have to have those type of discussions, not, we shouldn't be worrying about the cost for these projects. We need to have a bigger discussion on sort of what are our philosophies? Where do we want to take the district from a financial perspective?
Yeah, and I think that ties back to facilities again, too. Like, these are the, last year, two years ago, last year, upcoming years are going to be the biggest projects, the most money I think we're going to spend, have spent in a very long time. Probably would be the most money we'll need to spend in another very long time. I would, because now it's just like long-term maintenance and there are some larger projects. But I think the last time you kind of ran us through, unless there's something unexpected, nothing was really projected to be over like a million bucks or something, compared to like a 4 million, 8 million dollar project.
We've generally, I think, assumed, and Jim will correct me here, is we've been assuming $1 million a year in maintenance projects. And right now, we're looking at, if we call the roofing out envelope repairs, about a million and a half.
Right.
Is that in addition to general maintenance? So this would be like?
So the small emergencies that come up, we've been spending 200, 250,000. So that's part of, when we had these large projects going on, it's hard to get people in to do these other ones that could be put off. So we've spent a lot of big money and we got a little behind maybe on maintenance. But some of these big projects keep us from having to do a lot of maintenance, too.
Yeah, because yours is going to have a window or a lock or a door or painting or whatever, but that's not super expensive compared to.
No.
Yeah, it, for me, it's the big, I'm sorry, Wesley, it's those big projects, like the unknown pipe bursting, et cetera. I mean, we have very old buildings and there's, you know, we, I think we do have to make sure that we, if there is a $4 million issue, that we can, we can handle that. Because that stuff has to be done. Things, you know, I'm not saying every, we're going to have another one of those hopefully cross my fingers, but.
Till we dig up the backyard.
Oh, gosh, don't even say, yeah, dig up, when you're digging up something, something else breaks. But just making sure we make allowance.
The big, long-term plan that we had a few years ago, we've knocked out a lot of it by doing this. Two years ago, I had worked with the LA to update it. And so then I just requested that they, that we find some time to update it again. Because, I mean, now roofs are taken care of, winnings taken care of. There's a lot of things that were spread over those 10 years that we should be ahead on now.
And Ramesh just suggested the boilers, like, just lumping it in. And it's like, it's already starting to kind of chip away at some of those other things, so.
So can, instead of like focusing on the facilities projects, can we get back to what David was talking about? About like, looking at these charts, the conservative and the realistic? Like, are we comfortable with moving forward with these out of fund balance? Or is there a separate financial conversation we have to have about, like, do we want to take out debt?
No, I guess, I guess I was sort of saying, like, with all that said, I kind of agree with David. I don't see how we, I don't see how you could justify taking out debt.
I, I feel the same way. I just want to, I just want to make sure we're actually having that explicit conversation. Because, you know, we were able to do everything in the last few years out of fund balance and we're still in a really good situation. And these charts show that we're still going to be, you know, like, I, I don't want to go back to where we were, like, 200% of our fund balance, like, sitting on money and not doing projects. I think it is our, you know, it's our responsibility to be spending taxpayer money as needed, when needed, for the students who are here.
Right, yeah.
So I just wanted to get back to that conversation because I, I feel that we can do this out of fund balance.
Yes, no.
I feel comfortable with that, I'm not sure, you know, I just kind of.
Right, I mean, the way I look at it is, we have to, we have to plan for the future. I mean, we have to plan for the future. But we can't do it at the expense of the current students and the families today. Because we've been putting away, in my opinion, way too much money every year. We need to, and we're spending this now, and this is, and these are the projects that are going to support and support our students, our staff, our family. And it's why people move to this community. And so.
We're getting dangerously, and I don't think you are there, but I don't want to be, just because the money is there, we can spend it. And so with that being said, I think we always have to be, and I don't think we're there, but I never want, I don't want to be going down the road of, here's a project, let's do it.
No.
Because the money's there. And you're not saying that, so I don't want, I'm trying to avoid, but let me finish first, though. Every project should be evaluated very closely. Because we hear a lot of dreamy ideas from people about buying the house across the way or getting another piece of property or what have you. And that's, that can take us down a dangerous road. And David actually has me somewhat accepting of the fact that debt can be okay. Because it's, in theory, the people who didn't take money out of the hands of taxpayers beforehand and their kids didn't benefit from it, you know, we didn't build up savings that their kids didn't get to take advantage of, but now that money is there and gets to be spent on the future. But if I had my ways, we would always be living within our means and never have to go to referendum for taxes. Is no one saying that?
I wholeheartedly agree.
But that is part of where we're at now, is that we have luxury to not have to talk about raising our revenues any higher than the rate of inflation, which a lot of other places can't, cannot say.
Right, and just a reminder, sorry, just that debt will cost the taxpayers more money. That's a fact.
Well, ultimately.
And yeah, my, and my main issue, my main issue with these projects, I agree, things need to be done, they need to be done. But just sometimes the scope of these projects has ballooned in a way that it was far more expensive than we first imagined, and there's several factors to that. But I would just like to, in the, you know, with these upcoming projects, make sure that. And there's several factors to that, but I would just like to, in the, you know, with these upcoming projects, make sure that our, our scope is within reason that we're really watching costs, because materials are getting more expensive. Labor certainly isn't going down, so it's making sure we're conscientious of what we're doing, why we're doing it and.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm trying to, I'm not trying to say that we basically give the LA a blank check and say, go to town. No, we need to be fiscally, I mean, we need to be responsible, fiscally responsible with this money. But I guess what I'm going, what I'm trying to do is say, what we're trying to do with our oversight, let's, I mean, we need to still focus on this and watch over this. But the question remains, is if we do, if we decide to cut something out, before we do that, we need to talk about what our comfort level, what are our philosophies on, on essentially what's the fund balance should be, debt, and like going to referendum. That's what we need to be discussing, not necessarily whether or not we should be doing the House of Auditorium. Because I think that's, we should be doing it, there's no financial reason we should not be doing that.
And I think what you've shown us is that we can do these projects without going to, without having conversation about death, debt or referendum.
Absolutely.
And if at all possible, as representatives of the community, they would prefer that we also don't do that. Like I said, David has gotten me to accept the idea of debt. But as Sheri noted and Dan did, ultimately, you are paying something that interest is of no real benefit to anyone. Who is sitting in the room.
It's a tool.
It's a tool.
And it needs to be used appropriately.
Yes, but.
Nobody can go out and, most people, I shouldn't say nobody, most people can't go out and just buy a new car tomorrow without taking that loan or something, so.
But that.
It has its place.
The ability for easier ways to do that can encourage people to overspend than what they should. Do not use that, that hard nose, like David mentioned, look at the.
Very true. Or also potentially not prioritizing the spending well.
Absolutely. It's like when you charge it versus you pay cat, you really do notice what, what you're paying for and how you're paying for it. I mean, or what the cost is. At least I do personally, when I bring my kids, it's a lot different. Oh, and do I have, is this my $20 and how am I going to use it for your birthday money, you know? How are we going to be conscientious if, you know, we're going to have staff that we need to pay for? They're our most important asset, in my opinion. I want to make sure personally, we have enough money to pay the right people, to pay them well, and that includes administrators. So it's not just a facilities thing for me, it's all of these things. Yeah, I think it's our most expensive asset.
Yeah, well, the facilities is the most variable.
Absolutely.
We have a contract, we have many contracts, we've got curriculum contract, like those are all fixed costs.
Absolutely, but I don't think that they're going, I personally would not like to see our staff cost go down if it's going to result in our teaching being lessened, you know what I'm saying? I want to make sure that we provide the right environment with the right people. And, you know, if Martha wants us.
And with these projections, we can still ensure that, is what we're.
Yeah, hopefully, that's just what I'm asking for.
Something that occurs to me though, seeing these numbers again, it would seem like, you know, five, six years ago, when our fund balance was high, probably too high, pretty much. It seems like our fund balance was getting that high because there was a lot of maintenance being deferred. A lot of these projects that we've been spending down the fund balance on were, I don't know if they were just never proposed or never thought of or what, but it seems like definitely they were needed. I mean, if you look at the condition, the condition of this room here, this is much, much better, this is, you know, much, much better environment to learn than some of the things we saw before where it wasn't a classroom. But still, we had, you know, plywood stuck on top of an empty pool that had never been filled in. Since the 20s or however long ago it was. So there definitely, there was, there was a mismatch there. And I think I've heard some of this planning before in previous meetings, but I'm wondering, I think it would behoove us as a district to have that planning match in the future so that, you know, we're doing the maintenance, we're doing the projects that are needed. You know, if we're expanding the needs of teaching or expanding the needs of students, if we're having more students in, that we're planning adequately for it, rather than having that mismatch where we have a huge fund balance and a huge deferred maintenance bill.
But I am going to also point out too, that might be part of the case, but we also knew that we were, I mean, there was part of those years, we knew we were going to be doing facilities work.
Yeah, but I wasn't deferred, in my opinion, it was very much, well, we were, we had to evaluate, what is our student budget?
Right, but you don't, it's like, if I know I'm going to be putting in addition on my house, I'm not going to be touching the very, like touching pretty much anything until I know what I'm going to be doing. I'm going to be deferring all that maintenance until it's, until I'm ready. And so that could be, I mean, that went into part of this, and so we did spend a lot.
I do think we have to keep in mind too, that the facilities issues that we have here are unique. We have old buildings, landlocked property. These weren't easy decisions to come to, and I think we also went through a phase of changes in leadership, instability in leadership a while ago, that caused that you can't do that hard work when you're not, you know, stable. So we're now at a point where we have very stable leadership and we have had the time to, you know, actually do the work. And now we're doing it. So, yeah, we did get way too high there, you know, our fund balance, and I wish we could have done it sooner. But I'm happy to see that we're doing the projects. The back of Central Hauser needs to be done. There's no option in my mind. And we have money to do it, so we need to just pursue.
Well, how long did it take to get the shovel in the ground on the major, the $20 million project? Was that like four or five years or something?
I would say more like even six.
Six?
You know, I think.
So all that money was just sitting there for six years?
Starting in 2016, we were already in conversations about Hollywood property and we were in conversations about purchasing a house.
Right, I mean, we had to, we had to find a digital property. I mean, it was a puzzle to take together.
But that would make sense with this chart, because 14 to 20, the fund just started going up. And then we finally got to the point, like, okay, we're ready to spend it. But it wasn't just sitting there. We weren't just banking money, we were funding it so that we didn't have to take out debt and stuff.
And this came out of the last strategic plan.
Yeah, right.
That's why we ended up in the facility review. And part of that is the timing, is that we couldn't just do this without knowing what our plan was. It wasn't just Central, it was, we are going to buy property so that Ames can expand, so we can move children from crowding one building. And it really is, like Martha knows, moving people and children is a very difficult business and making sure we fit. So that's, for me, that strategic plan last time was the impetus for what we did.
You know, optimize facilities.
Yeah.
And specifically said to also be able to consider fully kindergarten, which now the board was able to consider and approve. So it's been, it is interesting to reflect on really how long, how long a process it takes.
It's kind of to your point, Sheri, that like, I feel like, as an outsider looking in and now being here as deeper into the discussions, all of the discussions are very clear, even sitting in the audience prior to being on the board, it was very clear how much effort and time and why that plan was the recommended plan and going forward and all that kind of stuff. So I definitely think the board has been very good stewards of the money. And now it's, it looks like we're spending a lot, which I think I've heard from some people, perception is, oh, you got a ton of money in the bank. And it's like, well.
Hold on.
Amazing how I hear that still.
Yeah, so, but like, these projections definitely help with that, David. So I think, I appreciate just kind of the adjustments and looking at where we were, and we were being conservative for a very good reason. We're kind of coming out of that. It really didn't play out the way we thought, so let's adjust them back up to kind of, you know, normal or whatever we want to call it. And it definitely feels like we're in a much better position. Because I think, I remember a chart, maybe, maybe it was before COVID, where I think we were crossing over at like 27. But I just think the way that we've been managing our budget and like, you've been very, Jim's been very conservative with a lot of this. And so it's, it's kind of continued to push out. So I think we are doing a very good job managing our money and spending it wisely, so. I don't see any reason why we would consider debt. Joel, I will say, at some point in time, some board, probably none of us, will have to go to referendum. It's just, it's inevitable. I don't think tax rates will keep up with inflationary costs. But I don't see us having to do that anytime soon. And I don't see any reason why we would take out debt for these projects having such a high fund balance, but.
Well, given what's on here though, so we have, we're having Blight Park Auditorium, Hauser Auditorium, Central Waterline and Roof Excursion. So we're talking about what Linda was mentioning, the project for Central and Hauser is not a part of that, so.
Yeah, but I don't, I mean, that's the only major project we have left.
So we don't have any.
Right, if not, no, Dan tried, it's not on there, yeah, right.
But that's the only major project we have left, so it's, it's not like we have another 20, $30 million that we need to try to spend.
No, but it certainly won't be cheap, I'll say that.
It won't be cheap, yeah.
Not, yes, things.
And it's not going to, yeah, it's going to be more.
It's so important though, I mean, there's nothing back there for those kids to plan, so I wholeheartedly agree, we need to fix it, but.
Yeah, much like Joel, I would prefer if we could stay within our means. But if we, when we get to that discussion of that, those other projects, that Hauser, Central project and whatever else might follow, at that point, we are talking about debt.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tool, so let's let.
But I think it's helpful, you know, from the, for the administrative team to understand that the board, you know, has a policy about 40%. And the question is really, when there's a policy, but is there really a comfort level with it? You know, in terms of moving toward that by, by doing these projects, not to, you know, spend unwisely, the decisions all really come from this groove. But the Central Hauser campuses, we've had, sort of becomes this indicator of, you know, it feels important, it needs to be done. Price tag is still variable around estimates. So this is helpful discussion, thank you.
At this point, I can't see any justification to go to change that 40% guideline.
No, no.
I agree with that.
I would agree.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing going below 40, it's the, are we comfortable?
Yeah, exactly, right.
40, really getting potentially to 40. That's different, you know, that's sort of a shift from where we've been.
Right. Thanks, Jim.
Is Stephanie you been a little quiet?
I'm just taking it all in.
She's preparing for her.
Her policy?
No, I mean this.
Thanks, Jim. All right, and thanks, David. Next up then is Facilities Committee.
This, the information that's in the packet is really a summary of where we're at with current and projected projects. And as David noted, there, we are in the fortunate position to be able to fund most of what's here, or all of what's here, without any special recourse, special recourse being referendums or debt. If there's any other questions about the projects, we can certainly entertain them.
This is all that we talked about the last meeting, right?
That's why I'm, that's why I'm.
I should.
Right, yeah.
I think I thought I was putting there's context, because it really relates to the finance conversation.
I was just saying, we're not going through each of these documents again, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think I'd be much, yeah, I'm just making sure.
We can, Linda, if you really want to.
She really wants.
Yeah, I wasn't here last meeting, so.
For those of us.
Can we do all that again?
Can we call the LA in the back?
Probably what we'll do is we'll convene Facilities Advisory again sometime in the next weeks to month. And then, you know, I think we've, there's been a lot of background information shared about the Central Hauser, the sort of shift around where Blight Park would go and then really consider, and then we really got the next step was to have this thought conversation about finance, so.
You know, I did have one question. I did listen to the last board meeting, so I was, I just did.
He's teasing.
On the, on the whole turf versus natural grass, one thing I was thinking when that was going, is there anything in the village code that would not allow us to make that choice? Like, do we have to get a variance or approval or something like that? I wasn't sure.
It depends on how impervious area is defined.
Oh, okay.
Planning and zoning is discussing that right now. Haven't gotten to that level of detail.
Different.
When we talk, when planning and zoning, when the village talks about impervious areas, usually in the context of permeable pavers. And that brick with the little rocks around the edges that allow the water to be, is that considered 100% soakable pervious? Or is it only 50%? But the whole parking lot and the way the building is occupied, the site generally puts us over any of the zoning criteria anyway. So we almost always have to go in front of planning and zoning and the village for those approvals to continue operating the way we were.
And can someone remind me, sorry, about when we do, you know, because we obviously have a parking requirement, as far as we still know, whether pervious asphalt is being considered that really filters, you know, that specific type of,
It'll get into.
And how the village considers that for drainage.
It'll get into what do we need to do for the stormwater rules.
Right, right, and.
Passing the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District requirements has an effect on that as well. It's not, it's not just the village and actually the MWRD is much more stringent in how they look at things. You can't go in front of them and say, I'd like a bye because I represent a good asset to the community.
Sure, no, I was just wondering, because it would certainly change the way the drainage works back there and what allowances we might have.
Yeah, and, you know, I know, Joel, you're an engineer, so, you know, but I, that's the piece I recall with the Ames parking lot. And then even the Ames area that the basketball play happens, is that's a pervious, permeable basketball area. We, you know, we got to sort of all the ratios and the calculations, that area just couldn't be solid.
Correct.
So, so it's really all a calculation and it will kind of almost go probably piece by piece of the project.
Yeah, I know, because it's not just about what's underneath. I was just thinking about there, there are specific materials that actually absorb the water and soak in it. So you don't get that pooling and maybe that would help, but, you know, I realize MWRD is a specific.
It becomes a design detail more than, should we do this project or not?
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just wondering.
It can certainly cost money, and at Hauser, they have underground storage that actually Hollywood School was able to take advantage of because they had excess capacity. But that, you'll spend money to do it.
Of course, I was just wondering if the architects are still talking about that because it's, you know.
Like, Joel, it means sort of the design details, really the engineering component of a draft plan if we choose to go forward with all that.
Right, I know, and it's made parts, but.
And that was essentially that discussion that Wesley was able to listen in on between natural grass and artificial turf is part of. It's detail, design detail that's important to us here and it's important to the community. But it doesn't really change the fact that this area is going to be a playable, soft of some kind surface to play on.
Sure, sure. No, I was just thinking about the car area with the, that other responsibility that we have, so, thanks.
I think at Ames, if you want to look at, it's a mixture of pavers and.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what they did back there, but I realized every side has to be specifically calculated, so.
All right, thanks, Joel. All right, now it's time for everyone's favorite part of the meeting with the disco ball descends.
I know, I was like last night, I didn't get introduced, and Policy Chair. Everybody got like Secretary, Vice President, President, I'm like.
I became a doctor.
Doctor Dan, I was like, whoa.
Your honor, yeah, you got the honorary title, just like, yeah. Okay, so we have press 109, so this is just a first reading. And it is nowhere near as onerous or cumbersome as 108 was. But definitely some items for, for discussion, particularly on the updates. So as always, thank you to Kathy for, and we attended the webinar together, but condensing it and just ensuring that we are reading the ones that are germane to our district. So I don't know if you spent time reading the entire packet. Some of those don't pertain to us or not relevant to us, so she just pulls out the ones that we need to take action on. And I think these aren't due until sometime in September, September 30th or something like that, so we are well poised time-wise. So I just kind of want to go through, it looks like there's about eight or so up for updates. We don't have to touch every single one unless people have identified questions, but there's definitely a few I wanted to talk through. So the very first one, policy 2, 230, public comment at BOE meetings. There is a question that needs to be answered. So essentially what this one does, it's in relation to public participation and public comment. And with the new option to set a time limit, like on the entirety of public comments. So I know our current policy mentions individual public comment should be limited to, our policy actually states five minutes. I don't know, I recall this saying three, but, so that's something we can discuss. But the policy states five, but so let's say, you know, it's a, it's a board meetings, perhaps not here with us, but it's a changing landscape with people coming to give public comment. And so do you want public comment to stretch out for longer than an hour, for instance? So the recommendation is to perhaps set a time limit on the entirety of public comment at like 60 minutes. And we did confer with the attorneys at Frenzic, and they are in favor of. the attorneys at, at Frenzic, and they are in favor of explicit board policy that sets it perhaps at like a sixty minute maximum time on public comment. You also know that we do public comment at the beginning and end, which we discovered is actually an abnormal practice.
Unusual practice, yeah.
But I know why we do it that way, I'm not saying we should change that, but we could set it at like thirty minutes each, but we have a lot of discretion in the meeting itself to modify it in the board meeting, so if we see that all public comments at the beginning, now we can say, okay, sixty minutes is fine at the beginning, and then at the end, not allow for any. So the default to the question is no, but again, I'd love to hear board member thoughts on whether or not you are inclined to set an overall limit of sixty minutes.
It seems a little strange to me, because for me, if you've got five minutes per person, then you really, it's really about how many people are you gonna say cannot speak? And that feels weird to me, like, usually I just, we let everyone speak who wants to speak, but we, I guess we've never had, I, Martha may know of districts that have had hours long of comment, I
I have rather few.
Yeah.
Happening, you know, it's been a long time since we've had many, 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 but I, I, I see what they're saying, it's just, it's hard, it's a hard choice, because how do you limit?
Yeah, I think there's, there, I mean, there's certainly a lot of issues right now that are prompting, you know, public comment, and even in the policy like it states, and we saw some of this when we were going through the mass conversation, if multiple individuals wish to address the board on the same subject, they should appoint a spokesperson, so we read essentially the same email seven times.
Seven times, yeah.
And so I think it just kind of also stream, streamlines those types of issues when there's similar sentiments on a topic and a community has kind of conferred prior to, whether it's social media or in other ways, and wants to express a message, they can kind of do so as a, as a collective.
Yeah, that one was different, because it's not, I, I don't know if they conferred, maybe they, I guess, I know it's the same cut and paste, but did those people talk to each other? It's hard to know when it's emailed, you know, how you deal with those people.
And that's something else we can definitely discuss to the virtual poll, it's, it's just a ripe time for having these conversations. It's not explicitly in our policy about accepting virtual comment because of the governor's order and, and in the pandemic, but we can also discuss it, I know we've touched on it in the past, but any other thoughts on this?
I think with, that we have the, you know, the ability to extend the time based on majority vote, I, I think it's probably wise to put a sixty minute in, because while we do want the communities coming and talking, we also have business to get done on any given night, so if there's a night where there's like business that needs to get done, you know, so, you know, we've never had this happen, and I hope we never do, and I want everybody to come, share their information.
I know, I was wondering if Martha, I'm sure there are districts that have had issues, that's probably why this is coming out.
I think that's probably why it's now appearing in policy, I don't know for sure, it's just that, you know, we know this, this has been a contentious time, the masks are certainly one of the clear examples of that. Yes, reading about other Board of Education meetings, and it's probably more what we're all seeing in just local media, that it, it does potentially hinder the board from getting to other work. You know, I think the point is, you know, very important that the board could vote to extend.
Yeah, that's important.
I understand the convenience aspect of it, but so far, we have no evidence that we're broken, so.
Right, and we don't even enforce the five minutes.
My contention would be, we're not broken, and honestly, I'm kind of thinking what Sherry just said is, while I do not, you know, two things, one, I don't support reading comments from email. If it's important enough for someone to say, then they can show up. And I said that before, and I'll say it again, it's, you can bang away your keyboard all you want, but come here with a well-thought-out statement and get up there and own it. But I also don't want to cut off or prevent someone from speaking.
No, I, I, I see where you're coming from, Joel, I mean, I agree with you completely about the email, I do think, I mean, it was a nice thing to do for the pan, during the pandemic, but I don't think, it's, it's easy for somebody to type away at a keyboard and send it off, I mean, we read how many duplicative emails, like, during the whole mask thing? I, I do think we should probably, I, I do think, even though it's not broken, I do think we should put that in place, that, you know, let's limit it to sixty minutes, we've never gone that far, but the fact that we can extend it, I think, is, gives us that option too, especially depending on the business, I mean, if we have business to conduct, and we're gonna be going long, you know, we need to get the business done, I mean, so, and people can always send emails still, we just won't read them and.
Well, they can send emails to us at any time, we know that, I, and as a compromise, I could say, we could limit the beginning to sixty minutes, but leave the end comment period open.
Well, that'd probably, I don't know, you know.
I was gonna mention that as well, because it seems like the, the first public, public comment session is always.
The most.
Yeah, that's where we get, you know, ninety of ninety-five and ninety-nine percent of all our comments, it's very rare that we have a comment come up in the second one.
Yeah.
I, I definitely appreciate what, what Linda said, and I think, I take it well, I think it makes a lot of sense that, yes, definitely, I don't want to hinder the public coming here and having something to say to this board or a future board, but at the same time, this, this board when we meet, we do have things that need to get done, and if, if all of that time is taken up with public comment, then whatever is on the agenda that night would suffer for it.
I mean, we've already been here an hour and a half, and so theoretically, we would only started a half hour ago.
Yeah.
There were that much, so it's, I know how tired Linda get, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, that was just, that was just an easy pop shot. Once you start, when we, when we've had those meetings that go until ten or ten thirty, like, you've had, all of us have had a full day's work.
We're zoning out.
And you just, you start getting exhausted, you can't think straight, you start, like, so. I do think, we've never had to do it, we probably, hopefully never will have to do it, but it's the day that we need it, and then we don't have it, that we can't control it as much as, I guess, more of what I'm thinking, and the fact that it does allow us to alter that if needed, I kind of like what Joel just said, is like, maybe we split it, or maybe we say, you know, here's how we're gonna allocate it, or we leave it more open-ended. If you want to stick around to the end, have at it, but we've got to get our business done first, and then we'll, we'll listen to whatever the public has to say, but I, I do think there, there needs to be certain mechanisms, same reason we have it limited to five minutes, and we don't, I don't think, I think we've only had to cut off maybe one person, I think it is hard for a lot of people to get to five minutes.
And it's well over five minutes.
Yeah.
Every time I've timed it and it comes up, I don't ever say a thing.
Yeah. Because you can tell. Yeah, we don't have fifty people here either, so it hasn't been that big of a deal, but do you think just having something to go back on, rather than, I, I just, I can, I can see the, I can see the issues popping up about cutting people off, and we don't have a policy on it, and stuff like that, it just, I think it does create other issues when we actually need a policy to rely on.
No, I think the vote, the majority vote, it's really important, I would never want to put a time limit without having a way to allow.
Right, to establish.
Yeah, that's important.
I think the, the forensic recommendation was thirty, thirty, I mean, is that something we want to keep, or that's?
What they were saying is it's unusual to have the after, the, the late, the end of meeting, second public comment, so, you know, one suggestion is to go thirty, thirty. I mean, we could go sixty, sixty, we could also remove the public comment later in the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's been on rare occasion, right, where maybe somebody has listened to the content of the meeting, and then they want to give a comment based on what they've listened to. I, I'm thinking of one example, you know, I think it has been maybe around facilities too, right, that.
People do the presentation, and then they send in the public comments.
Yeah, it's usually to cow, when they've learned something, and then they have a question.
But again, that might be moved if we move away from virtual, accepting virtual public comments, because the times I've seen it, they come in virtually.
True.
True, true.
And it's not removing access to us, it's just, you know, again, limiting the coming in, perhaps physically coming in person and, and speaking to the public, but people still very much have access to, you know, email and, and communicate with the board.
I think that's a really important point, and I think even the virtual public comment almost adds a, you know, layer of confusion, so as you know, like, the BOE members at District ninety-six is an email that, you know, community members, I think, don't hesitate to use, and I think you appreciate the feedback that you get from the community, and then we had the public comment at District ninety-six, which is specifically different, it's really something that should be read out loud, and I know on a few occasions, there were people that I would say, are you sending this for public comment, or are you sending this just to, you know, sort of alert the board to your questions or comments, so it does have the potential to create some confusion, and again, I think it was more of a pandemic accommodation, and.
It was, and I think you've noted exactly why we don't need the digital to be read here, as that forum's always been there, it's, it's never gone away.
And it seems that people know how, I mean, we keep it on our website, you know, we try to make that, it's on our, listed on our agenda, so we try to make that as clear to people, community members as possible.
Yeah, sometimes I found it confusing too, because it, when we read a handful of them, then it, it might even give an appearance that the community feels, the majority of the people feel a certain way, when we might have gotten forty other emails that feel, so it felt weird as a board member to have those heard, but not the others, do we ask every single person, you know, how do you go about that?
And there are people that certainly want to contact you, but they don't want it necessarily to be shared.
Read in public, yeah, that's the trick, is how do you.
Oh, yeah, we get emails all the time, multiple weeks, so.
So something maybe the majority are, are in favor of, or understand the reasoning and the rationale behind establishing a time limit, but like the idea that during the meeting itself, we can, you know, adjust it.
Isn't that something that, how would that go then, then would Dan just ask for a vote, if we notice that we're extending past that time, then someone, does someone?
I think if we're getting close to sixty minutes, and there's still ten people want to talk, we would say, it looks like we should extend.
Certainly.
Right, yeah, unless it's the same people, same.
And so the second part of the question is that, Dan, are we setting the sixty minutes just the beginning, or?
I don't think we have to be that explicit, it doesn't sound like, the way I'm reading this.
I mean, in the way that those questions are answered.
We have a sixty minute timer.
Although our policy says for after, right, so for us, it might be different than everybody else, because we do have the after comment, so the question is, do we keep them?
I think, you could say, we're only going to have sixty minutes, and then you are gonna say, you know, based on many people being here, let's go forty-five and fifteen, let's go thirty and thirty, or let's vote to extend it overall.
Right.
I, I think leave it flexible.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there is no harm in having, saying that, and I'm still not thrilled about this, but there's no harm in saying there's sixty minutes for public comment, and then we get, we can respectfully distribute it as necessary to complete the rest of our business.
Yeah.
I, if anyone finds that offensive, I'm troubled by their attitude.
And we'll probably just have to keep a closer eye on time, too, or like, stick more to that five minutes, and just, people need to tighten up what they have to say, hit your main points, and let the next person come up, and.
And if people are getting too repetitive and reading the same comment that's been, you know, handed out in a slip of paper at the beginning of the meeting, then that's an opportunity for us to hold to.
Not that we've ever experienced that.
Right.
Because once you, because would it, would it be, would we have to formally vote to do that?
And so it's, it's, you have to take a vote.
Majority vote is the board members, so.
Yeah, majority vote of the board members at the regular or special meetings.
Second page of.
It's in the, underlined in the text.
The time limit, maybe it's an overall majority vote.
Yeah.
And let's be honest, most of our public comments in the beginning, so we really don't need to talk about like splitting it up, because sixty minutes in the beginning, if there's people still around, we can.
I, yeah, and I just feel like you were saying, it's smart to have it in, in writing, if somebody's referring to, you know.
Yeah, because if we ever do have it, we can notice it, Dan, you could just say, open the meeting, we see we have a lot of people, let's take a vote, I mean.
Honestly, I think, I think it was Linda's suggestion of, if we're getting close to that time, then at that point, we stop and have the vote to extend, rather than just coming out of the gate, because it's almost like you're getting what you're asking for.
It's when we notice that we need it.
I wouldn't ask it unless we see that, yeah, let's, let it.
So more so, you would know, we have a sixty minute, five minute per person, sixty minute total, and then let it open, and then if we get there, we can stop, yeah, no, that's, I think that's a good. Do we need to memorialize that in the policy, that that's how we're gonna execute it, or can we leave it open?
Are we gonna, but we're not gonna do, are you gonna do, what do you, if you're leaving sixty, you'll say, we don't mean sixty at the end, we just mean we'll allocate.
Maximum time limit, and then we can log and get ready to go.
Yeah, so the middle one, yeah.
Right, right, right. So is it like twelve people, but, you know, who, who's gonna keep track of the time and all that, so.
Oh, board secretary, or, yeah. No, I'm gonna delegate to you.
This isn't part of the press, you know, update, and I know we never amended our policy to then say that we were going to accept virtual public comment, because it fell under the governor's orders. But even that all of our meetings are now back in person, you know, I'd love to hear, I've heard a couple already on feelings of virtual public comment, maybe as it relates to the start of the new school year or something, thinking through removal of that option, and if somebody has public comment, they can come in person, or again, they can just email the board with their concerns.
I, I defended the virtual public comment the last time, and honestly, I've read a lot of them. I, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I do understand the idea of what Joel said, and said very well, if you have a, an issue, write out your statement and bring here and own it, bring it here and own it, I definitely can appreciate that. And it's also been said as well, we do have the regular email where we're getting community feedback all the time, just not necessarily read out loud, and there have been many times where it wasn't clear, should we be reading this or not, so in the interest of streamlining and, and less confusion, and going back to the way things were before, I'm, I'm happy to say, okay, well, at the end of this school year, we won't do, have any more email public comment.
I think if we state that on our agenda, so social media can revise the agenda.
Where, where we would, is there any other board thoughts, comments?
I just have one question, does, does the state or anyone else I speak ever say that if someone has, you know, an, in physical inability to come here, are there accommodations that we make for that person, do they have to send a representative, like, if they're physically not able to come because of some reason? Whether it be a health or.
We probably say you could request an accommodation, so if somebody said, I physically am unable, like, we know, like, we're meeting on the central multipurpose room for the second time ever, because it's now ADA accessible, right? So we know our settings need to be accessible to all, but if there are others, maybe just health concerns, I think somebody would say, like, I have an accommodation, and so I would like to, you know.
So let me ask you, how have we done that in the past though, pre-COVID?
Never been asked.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only throwing out the, the, but it's because there are people that exist that need accommodations, just like we have students, and I just want to make sure, I didn't know if the state said anything about that.
I think we have to, you know, provide reasonable accommodations, and I think that would be an interesting question, if somebody made a request, you know, we would probably review it for, is it, is it reasonable? I think the other thing I would say is if we were ever again in a disaster proclamation of needing to meet remotely, that maybe it would coincide with remote, you know, if the board was meeting remotely, like, we had it even, I think once because of a weather emergency, so.
Right.
I think it would be also pretty easy for someone to email the board and ask it to be read at board member comments. There's, we have plenty of accommodations that can be, that can work.
Yeah, I just, I asked, sorry.
It doesn't take a lot of creativity to figure that out.
I mean. No, I, I agree, I mean, if there's accommodation needs to be made, there's technology, we could, if somebody really wants to come and speak, and they need an accommodation, there's plenty of technology out there that we can somehow accommodate them.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, because you'll get that one person, and we, you know, somebody has to have an answer.
Sure.
Then they should ask.
Right.
Right.
And the expectation is that we're respectful of that request, and we figure out a way to make them heard.
Right.
You've convinced me, Joel.
I'm getting tired.
Nothing for it on that, yeah, I think so, I don't have anything on four seventy, it looks like it was just a, no, okay. Court duty, I don't know, Martha, you can help me with this one, there is a board question, I know, I, I know the default is no, but I think we want to answer yes because of our, what was it, the, the RIC contract applies to like all, we don't differentiate between like licensed.
And supports.
Yeah, I, actually, I thought about this.
So that we should say actually yes and yes.
I'm in agreement with you, this is, this should apply to everyone who works here, so.
I think it's just that the mandate only applied to certified staff, so it's more expansive than the mandate.
If you get jury duty or some other legal obligation, then we will continue to pay your daily rate, whatever that has to be.
And it's in the RIC contract, which is, you know, applies to educational support personnel also, so.
I'm, I'm actually surprised, because like, this is easy one on here, I, I just assumed that was like every, I thought that was required.
No.
What we do, sort of our practice.
Yeah, no, it's not.
I've never heard of this before.
Whatever it is now.
It's fifteen total.
Is it? I think, I remember getting eight, it must have been a really long time ago, yeah.
There's like, like, two dollars parking and thirteen fifty or something like that.
Okay, so I don't know, any other discussion thoughts on that one? Just so you know why we would not be answering with the default, but it sounds like everyone agrees.
Can I just ask clarification, we're going yes for both of the questions?
Yeah, right, yes.
Okay.
That was my understatement.
Okay.
I didn't have anything on, oh wait, why am I on a board? Four seventy, five eighty, oh, six one forty, education of homeless children, there, I had nothing, I, we already, this is consistent with our practice, the executive director, which is like the West Forty, you were saying, so, six one forty is good. I did not have anything on six two ninety, homework, missed homework, absent for valid cause, may make it up in a reasonable timeframe.
I think this is consistent with our practice also.
Seven one five, student and family privacy rights, we actually, Don read this, because it kind of falls within his area of expertise, and this was all consistent with our practices with what we're doing, so Martha had, Don, take a look at it. That one was fine. Zeb?
Do you have a point?
Pay no attention to that man up here.
One thing that we probably have to look at is the five centers.
Okay.
It's going to be an area that, and then we'll probably get some guidance out to staff, if they do survey kids, just and for minor, the guidelines from that, we do not, you know, we don't sell our information, just some, some minors, minor changes and informing staff, so.
Well, Don must not be here today.
Everyone also have a screen, just, I'm like...
He's going to talk about that.
But seven two seventy, administering medicines to students, so this is one that I wanted to bring up for board discussion, so I believe this was up a couple years back, or maybe it looks like twenty nineteen, and when it was adopted, at the time, it did not, you all did not adopt the language as it related to opioid antagonists, the, um, oh god, what's the word, narc, like, I'm not ready.
Narcan, but they call it opioid antagonist, that is the language of the policy, is opioid antagonist.
So, that does not currently exist in our policy, because that portion was not adopted at the last implementation of it, but I guess I'd like to hear board thoughts on reconsidering adding this language in, I, I believe the nurses have brought it up, I know our local law enforcement sort of carry it, think it's a good practice for us to have on hand, you know, a lot has changed in the opioid crisis in the last couple of years, and we also conferred, you know, with Shelley on this, and she's comfortable with consideration, like related to the use of access to Narcan, I think she said we might have to...
Yeah, I mean, there would be some more work that we need to be done around the policy, but again, if it, if it's of board interest to include it, and I know Pam is here, and Pam, it's interesting, it came up very organically from our team of nurses, asking if this was something that we could have available, and interestingly, the policy came up for review, then, you know, this, this time around, we had our annual safety meeting, and our, and our local law enforcement was sharing the, probably the importance of schools keeping that kind of thing on site, so it's, it's just interesting, these things have all kind of come together at the same time, you know, I know, when we looked at it several years ago, it was kind of a, definitely not, you know, it didn't seem like we should have to be concerned about that in a PKA school district.
You could have a parent at pickup, you could have somebody who, I mean, I don't, I don't really see it should happen.
I think it also, I think we did confer with the, the police and everybody at the time, and I don't remember there being a recommendation, but you're saying they would recommend it now?
Well, the first place this came up was from our team of nurses, they came to Pam, Pam meets with nurses regularly, and they brought this up, I don't know, Pam, if you have more you want to say about that?
Here's some of their webinars and things, and the health department, they're giving more information on having this, and it seems to be that schools do have it on supply, because it's becoming more of a safety measure to have in place.
So I know, like, in terms of law enforcement, they carry Narcan in all their squad cars, I believe, so again, they didn't come and ask us if we would keep it, it was that our nurses expressed an interest in it, we had the annual safety meeting, we brought up that our nurses had an interest, what did law enforcement think about us potentially having it, there are, there are hoops we have to jump through, I mean, I think we need a, would need a thorough legal review around the practices, and just the access to how we have it on site, et cetera, so I, you know, I, it does feel very important to have some board direction around whether or not this is worth exploring and developing.
Is there any indication as to what the cost of the, the district would be for something like this, and do, would there be any liability exposure?
I think there's a li, there's definitely liability that needs to be considered, and I think that's, you know, even in some of the, the footnotes, and I think the last time, I think the wording was something like, this is potentially riddled with legal liabilities in place of your board attorney.
It was not a, a please go do this recommendation.
Yeah, this is not a simple, yes.
And with, well, if it was a parent, I'm not sure we would be allowed to administer that to a parent, they're not our student population, are we?
It is interesting.
Do we have a burden to, to help that person, or do we call the police, what is our role in that?
Right, yeah, yeah, I think it's, you know, because this is a policy about administering medication to students.
To students, that's my only concern, and not that I wouldn't want to help someone, but what is our, what is our role there?
And I think that's the kind of thing that we would want clarified through, you know, legal consultation.
Again, only if, like you were saying, if you felt that the board wanted us to further pursue that, and...
And if there's not a comfort level, it's, I mean, I am, you know, and I think our nurses too are comfortable with the fact that, you know, law enforcement, ambulances, you know, there are sources that, you know, people could get here quickly, I think it's a very unlikely scenario, I really do, on the other hand, I think from the nurse perspective, from the public health perspective, they're hearing, you know, this is something schools should consider, so.
More high schools likely, I would expect.
Right, I'm thinking, are you thinking just, how's it, do you want all the buildings to do this, what's the thinking?
I think those are the things I would really want our attorney to help us solve for, I mean, I think those are great questions, and I don't...
It's a difference, right, in our, not to say there wouldn't be a fifth grader, but I mean, it is a difference in how we administer and proceed, so.
I certainly think it's interesting, but in third paragraph, it says, nothing in this policy shall prohibit any school employee from providing emergency assistance to students, including administering medication, I, I'm sure the lawyers will have more to say about the liability aspect, but this is really meant for certain medif...
Right, I mean, it tends to be a good Samaritan, right, that you would, you would, it would have to be willful and wanton negligence, that you, you know, you know, you would apply this medication to the wrong person at the wrong time with malicious intent, that's where liability often comes in, it's just that it's, there is a training aspect, there is just an access to having it, you know, so there's...
And do parents need to be notified, or, or given approval ahead of time, like, do, how does that work?
I think an emergency application, probably, you're not calling them ahead of time.
No, I don't mean then, I mean ahead, like, you just have it set up where everyone either, you know.
Well, the one, the other thing we have is the undesignated EpiPens, right, and it's this idea of a, a child potentially suffering, a potentially life-threatening allergic reaction for the first time ever with an unknown allergy.
Right, and they do know about it, right.
So that is why schools keep undesignated EpiPens, it's, so it sort of falls into kind of the same consideration, I think for child...
Well, we're only talking about EpiPens, we're not talking about Narcan, like, the only thing I've heard...
No, we're talking about Narcan.
We are talking about Narcan.
EpiPens are not ever heard of.
EpiPens are, we already have.
Narcan being used for anything other than hairline.
That's exactly what...
Right, exactly.
So afraid people are going to have hair on our noses on our campus?
That's what they're saying.
In this particular case, it's students.
Right, that's, that's the question.
Great, yes, for this policy, it's, it's covering students, not anyone else.
Yes, yeah, right.
Because I'm reading E for F.
Pam, Pam, why do you come up here?
I just have a question, if we're talking about liability, if more schools are having it, I think it would be a good idea to have legal opinion on how liable are we, we don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, right, I'm, I'm thinking we should maybe pull this one out, to do a deeper dive into this.
That's what I'm thinking.
That makes sense, that does make sense.
Get some more information on what that really means, and...
And I guess the question is, is there, I agree, needs a deeper dive, need more legal consultation, is there even an interest in sort of taking that deeper dive, or is it, you know, yes, it's a very unlikely scenario, yes, it is possible, we hear about, you know, and again, drugs in our school has not been an issue, but you know, again, you hear about things that are linked with, you know, it's not, it's not necessarily intentional, right, in terms of the, what could be, you know, what our nurses are, stand, putting in health...
I think Pam's last comment makes me think we should be doing a deeper dive, because if this is a conversation happening in the school nurse community, it's something we probably should be looking into.
Sure, yeah, I'd be interested in what, what are other, other K to, K to eight institutions doing versus the high school, you know, what's the difference, you know?
Yeah, I agree, I'd like more context on why, why that's happening.
Yeah.
Because maybe, because if we're missing something, then we need to do it, but like, I just, I don't, I just don't see this.
Yeah, I mean, but, but to Linda's point, if the nurses are talking about this, there might, there's probably a reason that we're not...
We should find out, we should definitely ask them and find out.
Yeah, let's, let's find out.
So some of the questions, like, what are some of the other kind of K through eight schools, and again, this, perhaps they adopted it already back in twenty nineteen when it was up, other K through eight schools, I don't know, I didn't look, liability, costs, somebody asked about what, like, the costs associated with it.
Okay, are these nurses trained in all of that as well?
They have to be trained, I mean...
Yeah, but they're not currently, currently?
They're not currently, unless they're getting training elsewhere, but they're not trained as part of their roles as school nurses.
Okay.
So we're going to just pull that one off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um...
Because you said these aren't due to like September, right?
Yeah.
We have plenty of times, yeah.
Somewhat kind of related, seven two eight five, which is now renamed, rewritten, so kind of moving away from language about food allergies specifically, just to anaphylaxis prevention, so this one does have a board question that needs to be answered, and I, I believe our answer is yes, because we do keep an undesignated supply, as Martha mentioned, of Epi, EpiPens, I'm just going to call them, and then there is even like, in the footnotes, you know, there's even additional discussion about staff training and usage, like, they just say at least two staff members in each building, in addition to the nurse, Martha was saying pretty much all of our staff members, because they go on field trips, they go, like, we're more than complying with the at least two, undergo like, just very rigorous training in order to administer it, so that was very straightforward.
Or when they're on the playground duty, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, it's very easy to administer, it's online training, it's, you know, and then our nurses will work with anybody who wants additional training.
Makes sense.
It's actually part of first aid training in general.
It's become very commonplace, I mean, not so much that we have to administer, but that the training is very common.
No objection to default, I assume.
Right, which is yes, if you carry it, and then all of the other ones really fall within the five-year review, and I have like, no notes on them, which maybe means that they were straightforward.
There didn't seem to be any...
No, they're pretty...
Nope, yeah, they were just the ones that you, you just need to look at every five years, but they all looked...
Sure. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie?
Martha, sorry, before we leave this, there's the five one forty solicitations buyer from staff.
Oh.
This, I'm thinking the Girl Scout cookies, and the popcorn sales, and the random trips, is this really something that needs to go to your level? Does it, staff need to ask you for permission to request sale of Girl Scout cookies?
And they don't, I'm sure their Girl Scout cookie order forms sitting in teachers' lounges, they do not ask.
And I don't think they should be, this is...
Although I will say, usually, when I was a teacher, I'm being asked to buy the cookies, not the other way around, but there, I'm sure there are people that bring them, but...
I was just reading it again, see if there's a dollar amount.
Well, is this again, it came up with an earlier idea, that this was a policy in case it's ever needed, in case someone is making a nuisance of themselves, or there's something that, you know, people are complaining about.
Well, but the problem is, is that it says, you shall not do this without prior approval, so the minute they put that order form on the table, they violate the policy.
The policy, right.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
I'm with you, Joel, I actually thought I was overthinking it, so I'm glad you brought it up, because I wasn't going to say anything, but this is a very zero tolerance, in the moment that somebody's a nuisance and you tattle on them, then well, everybody else does it, and...
Yeah, I've sold a lot of...
So what, what are you, are you saying, should we not have this policy, or are you saying we should amend the policy?
I'm sorry, my kid had it, I wouldn't do it, I would make a seller.
Honestly, I would just, I would defer to Pete Gatz for his building, to me, control your building.
You should have left, like, no.
Or, or a designated, or a designated discussion.
Also, change the authority in which it's needed, okay.
Change the authority, or even somehow...
Is this a standard policy, or is this something that we...
Probably is, yeah.
It's a boardlet's play.
Yeah.
I mean, really, I don't want you notifying us...
No, I don't know, I don't want to know.
Of specific donations and such.
I don't, I don't need all that.
Yeah, I would hope that it would, you know, they, I'm sure the building principals were aware of it, it was a really serious issue.
It's not going to be an issue, but...
It's not an issue.
Never been an issue in almost ten years.
Yeah, I, I can't see it, but who knows, there might be one random person one year...
It's going to be an issue next year, no?
Yeah, well...
Thanks, guys, you too.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing your, your kids are all grown up, and we don't be buying cookies.
So...
But I guess it comes down to then, if, if we're going to rewrite this, then we're paying a lawyer to...
I A S B, we can, we can start with I A S B, because it's part of our free service.
Yes, let's get the free stuff.
And if it's never been an issue, I don't know that I'd get all worked up about it, but I, I just had the same thought.
Right, and I guess, I guess that's sort of like, that's sort of my thing, because if we're going to be carving it out for Girl Scouts, I mean, are we going to make carve out...
And that's exa, that's, I picked on Girl Scouts, because that's what I've sold a lot of.
Right, and I'll, I'll let you know, and I know I'm probably going to be ridiculed and chastised for this, but I always hate it when people ask me to buy Girl Scout cookies, so, I can't tell you, I can't tell you how many I've like thrown away.
And I, I think this is an I A...
Is there a point about you guys?
Maybe that's, that's, we can...
I'll tell you the other example that now comes to mind, is GoFundMe, yes, yes, that does become uncomfortable.
I feel like that's more of what this is tied to, not children's.
Yeah, I don't see people doing side businesses as much as that.
I, I bet you this is not tied to GoFundMe, because this is written several years ago.
That's a good point.
Five years, at least.
But I think it's more of those types of things than...
Yes.
Why don't we just see if there's a, a better option and worry?
Yeah.
Do they have something that's more nuanced?
And I, and I will tell you, in the event of like a GoFundMe, sometimes that becomes very uncomfortable for staff.
Oh, sure.
You know, maybe it's a family, and then their class, you know, I mean, those just can become awkward, so I could see how this could be helpful in those situations, but...
Yeah.
On the other hand, people are donating to GoFundMe, I don't necessarily know, so...
Right.
It's not necessarily on district property. Uh-huh, it's not necessarily on district property.
For me, it's really about, is it a disruption? You know, they always talk about classroom disruption, for me, is, does it disrupt the, like, the staff life or whatever they're going through too? And I mean, that's the distinction for me. But the language, I mean, you're right, it doesn't say that.
This is a replacement of a current policy, right? So, yeah, it's a five-year review.
Yeah, but it is like no tolerance, like, I think Wes said.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's very clearly, "You shall not."
Shall, shall not.
Shall not, that's a very strong language.
Yes, it is, it is.
It's a very, it's a very strong legal term, "shall."
Yeah.
All right, so anything else for policies?
No.
All right.
I wanna take away that disco ball.
No, leave it down, we got, we got.
Disco ball goes back up to the ceiling. All right, then that takes us then to Personnel Committee.
All right, so I'm gonna wrap this up pretty quick, so it's all on you and how long we stay here. All right, so the, so just bringing this, just to get kind of a directional dialogue going, so Martha and I, this has been on our docket for like two years, wasn't very important, wasn't even applicable for a certain time, but we have a very granular and kind of ridiculous clause in there that lists out everything that we have, and it is very, in my opinion, it's very micromanaged. And so Martha and I were talking about this last time we met with Personnel Committee, and we were just kinda, my thought was like, how do we get a little bit higher up? It's like, really, what is our goal here? Is we're, we're a governing body, so we approve the budget, we don't necessarily need to approve every activity and how that budget is spent, which is essentially kind of how we're structured and what we're doing. So I think just for a general consensus on how we wanna do this going forward, probably, I don't know if it could be applicable for next year. I think this, you said the stipend committee is meeting soon?
Yes, it's supposed to meet in June, so.
June, so to figure out what's gonna happen for next year, which will hopefully go back into a, a normal year. I probably don't, I, I wouldn't anticipate this changes much, because it's kind of brand new. We've asked for like attendance and stuff, just to be able to quantify it a little bit. So I think my, my suggestion would be, we have a budget, we have a bucket of money that we're comfortable with. We have the report out, which is the, I think it's the, the appendix B that's attached here, that's the list of all the stipends. So if we're gonna authorize money to be spent, we should understand how the money's being spent. I don't think we should like approve it or deny it. I think it's up to the discretion of the principals and the committee and the superintendent and all that to actually execute the budget that we actually do. But we probably, we, we've been talking about putting some guardrails around it, so I think we need to come to some sort of consensus of like, do we wanna have a minimum, minimum enrollment? How do we want to, we've been talking about equity, I don't think any, any of us are trying to take away something from another school. If anything, we're probably trying to employ more of it at other schools or whatever, but I, I think that could, you know, just giving some general direction on, to the committee maybe of like how to balance it, what does equity kind of look like? How far does it go, things like that? We probably just need to have some general guardrails and just step up a little bit from the process that we're doing it. So I just kind of wanted to kick off a quick conversation, and we haven't talked about it for a while, and I think we, I think this is about where we left off before everything bad happened for the two years, so.
I think I mentioned this last time, but besides the enrollment, I think frequency of when they meet is also really important, because there might be 200 people at the central science fair, but that's the one, it's, it's a couple, it's not a one day, but it's, it's not like they meet every week for the entire year, so I think there's other things to consider besides just how many kids are in it.
No, I, I.
It is important that it affects a lot of children, but there are those one-on-ones that come from the every week.
Yeah, and it's.
For me, it's really like, I, I appreciate the higher balcony view on this, I, I really don't wanna micromanage this, but.
Yeah, I think it's more, to me, I guess it's more, that, that's a great point, because like, the basketball coach is the basketball coach, and like, all that stuff is kind of, that's what it is, traffic guards or crossing guards or whatever, I think it's more like the fun clubs that we were kind of focused on and.
I, I don't feel comfortable with the whole minimum number of kids type of thing. I, I think these are enrichment experiences that, maybe it's a, something that only four kids are really interested in, and, and if that's a really good experience, I mean, I would leave that to the, like, the building principal to decide what enrich, you know, what activities are happening. Try it, if only four people did it, maybe it'll grow because it was really successful. I, I, or, or maybe something else comes in place, but I, I, I think this is something, I don't feel comfortable as a board getting into that level of it.
I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
I think this is a.
So, how do you control the budget if there's no guidance? And I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying.
I guess the thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheri and Linda, but I don't think we're saying, don't put guardrails up. I don't think we're saying, we're just saying, looking at the guardrails, and so I think we need to have a broader discussion on.
General guidelines.
What the general guidelines will be, because I do think there needs to be guidelines. I completely think that's a fantastic idea, because I never understood why we went through each of these line by lines and like, and sort of questioning it. I think it's, let's, this is the budget, this is what you can do, have at it, figure it out, but then put guardrails around.
Considerations, like, consider these things before you.
Right, and so I'm not, but, I mean, I, I mean, I think we need to have a deeper discussion on what those guardrails should be.
And what percentage of our budget is this expense? I don't consider this.
It's about $150,000 annually, so.
We, we never had a discussion about money. It was always, why does, honestly, it was always, why does Hollywood have so many? And why does, I think it was either Blythe or Ames or, I don't know, one of the, have, not have enough?
Right, right.
And how do we distribute that more evenly? So if we're not gonna take anything away from Hollywood, and then Hollywood turns into Central, Ames and Howzer, or, well, I guess Howzer could be included in there too, but it's less there, like, does that, like, every one of those is 500 bucks, so are we okay with our budget going from 150 to 250?
I am.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I mean.
This is about staff development, the reason that Hollywood might be different is it has different people. These are people that lead these classes, these are people that design the curriculum to do that often. It's a lot of work, and it's not as much money as you'd think if you're the one doing it. And for me, it's about giving them an opportunity to share with students or doing it after school time or before. I, I, for me, I, I really don't, I don't mind paying extra if those teachers are willing to do the work and to make those relationships. Because we talk about safety in schools, we talk about, you know, enhancing their performance.
From where we left off, though.
This is about relationships for me.
What do you mean?
We were, we were very much on like, we need to have a budget, we need to have guardrails.
Oh, never for me, never for me.
I never, I never. Every conversation about stipend, if you can tell, those of us have been on board for a long time, this was like, this was, this is something that is a, historically, every time I heard stipend, I kind of.
Pretty much.
There's a reason.
So I haven't been really engaged in the conversation, because I'm not even sure where, I wasn't even clear exactly where we were going.
Yes, and historically, there was a reason why this was, this was very, very micromanaged, and I, I have, I really want very little to do with that. This is about the principals and their staff, and the families who sign up for this, and the relationships with their teachers.
And I truly don't think that there's enough, there's a lot, there's so much growth that it's going to go 100,000 dollars more.
Yeah, whatever.
I think it's, I think it's actually very, I don't think there's huge growth opportunities there, so I, I'm thinking.
I do think, and, and I think it was Blythe, and that, I think Hollywood compared to Blythe, the number of activities was definitely greatly.
I think Hollywood compared to everybody, yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and from, from that aspect of things, I definitely am hearing what you're saying, that makes sense.
We're keeping emphasizing that, it's a good thing.
Oh, it is a good thing, I, I would wonder, is there a way to encourage it?
Right.
If, if we have a club that's at one school or one or two schools, is there a way to encourage it to, you know, be socialized at the other schools?
Yeah, and actually, that was more of where I was leaning towards, is like, how do we get more engagement with the committee and the building principals? And like, I mean, you gotta find people that have the time and want to do it, have an interest in that kind of stuff.
Sometimes it's that people have an infant at home and they need to get from daycare, it really has a lot to do with their own families too, and so for me, I, I find this, in my opinion, as an investment in the staff, which will lead to better results for the students, so I, I don't see this reaching half a million dollars or anything like that.
That being said.
I'm not saying you let them put five million hours, that's obviously not reasonable, but let's let the people that manage our staff know that.
And I, but that's, we're saying, legitimately so, these are valuable activities, and then we're saying, well, it probably won't get to that level, but we just talked about a couple other things, public comment, we don't think it'll get to that level, but we set a guardrail on it. So I think there's justification for guard, for guardrails and some kind of guidance as to what we wanna see. Minimum enrollments, I don't think is a bad thing, because it means that whoever is presenting the club or activity actually has a fair, fair amount of interest. And so, at, at, first I was thinking 10 kids, but I think that's too many, so it's five.
Right, but, but I guess it's, the question is, can we do a minimum enrollment in like year two or three? Because to your point, it could take a while to get that club off.
I, I definitely would, would wanna hear back from the principals, because, you know, if we set a limit of five, there's gonna be somebody who says, oh, but I only get four, and four is optimal.
But, but I guess, I guess to, to Wesley's point, I, I think your question, correct me if I'm, if I misunderstood it, but my question is, sort of looking at the concept of putting together a budget, which I, I believe we should have a budget, I mean, I don't think it's gonna balloon, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit things, but at the same token, we do, we need to split parameters around it. So I guess the question to you, my question is, I think there's a, a agreement, general agreement here, that we do have a, like, a parameter, as we set up sort of guidelines on how we deploy this, but I don't know if we had, are we ready to have that discussion tonight? Or do we wanna have that discussion at another time? But I think.
I, I think we, I think we, this was just kind of like a starter to like get this back on our radar, because it seemed to be kind of a big thing that was going on. So I'm just, I'm a little thrown off, because I was expecting this to go in a very different direction, so.
I think Linda and I are at a certain place, like you said, because this is many, many years that we've been talking about this in a very, very specific way. And for me, when, when this is written, that there's a 1.5 increase for the, these rates, that to me is not going to be a place that's ballooning when there's a percentage.
Right.
Written down.
Yeah, it's not huge, I mean, it's not.
And for me, I would let, personally, I would let the principals and whoever's ever done the stipend committee deal with what they think is most likely the best scenario for each building, and I'm not opposed to financial limits, obviously, we can't have it balloon, but.
I'm certainly not.
I am not interested in, in micromanaging this.
Because the parameters are tight, because they're in the RRC contract.
I was gonna say, it goes as far that we stuck this whole thing, like, line by line in the contract, which seems a little insane to me.
Which means the committee reviews it around valued students, budgetary, and then the board has sort of ultimate approval and authority over it.
And so I don't know that we need to take the clause out of the contract, but I don't think we need the list of stuff in the, like, that's just, that's so tight to me, that there's almost no room for movement without like an act of conference.
Well, what we do is we, we make substitutions, so I, I'm gonna use the example of, there is nobody that wants to teach knitting at Howzer this year, somebody wants to do book club instead, and so really, they kind of take the placeholder and may shift the content.
Yeah, but do we need that in the contract?
No. Well, it's an appendix of the contract.
No, I understand that, but does that need to be there?
Yeah, it, it exists, I think it's typical, like, other contracts I've seen, you do list those activities, just to, just so that there's not confusion. I, I think maybe it's just a.
It's more of a, yeah, it's explicit.
It's like noting your agreements.
It's like attorneys, it's your information, we're all on the same page.
We're paying somebody to, to do clubs.
We need to have a list, does it need to be in the contract?
I could say like 10 clubs at this overrate.
Eight clubs.
It, it's in there, so I guess.
I could say Howzer co-curriculars, Ames co-cur, you know, I think the other pieces though, before and after-school supervision, there are stipends for mentors, there are stipends for people doing supervision on the overnight field trips at Howzer, so there's a lot that are very explicit for a reason. I think where the discretion comes in more is around the clubs, the co-curriculars.
Yeah, it's more the clubs than anything else. I could totally see it from like the coaching perspective and stuff like that, the lead nurses, mentors, things like that, but I, it, I guess to me, it's more around the clubs that are a little more fungible from year over year, depending on who's available and how many kids and stuff like that. Most of the rest of it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, and I would say that's where the principals, working with their staff who are interested in clubs and activities after school, kind of, do make some reasonable substitutions. They don't extend beyond the, the agreed-upon number, because that's sort of what the budget is, but they will shift content.
Yeah, I've never seen like some crazy year we had, you know, just a ridiculous amount of requests, I think the principals were pretty good.
No, and to both of your points, I'd love to see it expanded, quite honestly, like, is there a way that we could say, hey, this school is doing this thing, does anybody at my school want to do that? And like through the committee proc, because all of this stuff will be in June, and then that, that's just it for the year, so it's all pre-planned.
Well, let me ask, could we maybe just sort of say, like, Hollywood's got 10, Blythe's got six, whatever club, how many clubs there are, say, okay, you know, it's, we're not gonna say the computer club or the knitting club or the book club, it's like, you have 10 clubs, that's like, it's in the contract, that's what you're limited to, you can come up with 10 clubs, not saying that we don't expand it eventually, but.
You can leave a provision, that's, if you come up with a great idea, then the stipend, you'll consider it.
I think that's what, I think it's theoretically, that's already happened, because it has gone through a committee review.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't come to, to us.
Doesn't come to us, no.
Like Ames has five, I'd like say Ames has five co-curriculars, whether it's Pokemon Club and Running Club, or, you know, like, maybe that is not really what is the most important thing to the board, it's the, and it's, it's also our principals and the committee.
We really wanna vote on, can Ames have a Pokemon Club?
And I'm not sure it should be, honestly, that's not the 30, that, that's not the balcony view, I think that we're supposed to take.
Yeah, we're way, for us, we're way too in the weeds on it, which is like my main view.
The contract language forced the board into the weeds on this, and I think it speaks to, as Linda and Sheri know, like, some prior practices that needed tightening up, so now.
I think what you've described is, we already operate under a, under guardrails, essentially, so. We're revisiting something that probably doesn't need as much discussion, other than the fact we're forced into it by the contract.
Yeah, maybe, so why don't we do this, the committee is gonna meet in June, I've got a couple sessions with Martha throughout the summer, just kind of sporadic with calendars and stuff like that, we can, whatever they come up, I can't imagine, it's probably gonna be wildly different from what it already is.
I have requests for like two new clubs, so, yeah, I think, and I bet that.
So why don't you and I just have another conversation, and maybe you can get some, some feedback from the principals, I'm trying real hard not to call Pete up here to the table, who's, you know, he's speaking for all his peers and all that kind of stuff, but this, not gonna do that to you. But we just, if you wanna get some feedback from them on kind of how they feel about it, or what maybe improvements we could do, or how to just make it easier, but maybe this isn't, it felt like a very big thing to me, but that was two years ago, and maybe, maybe I misinterpreted that as well, so maybe this isn't that.
I just don't think we've done anything either, so I'm sorry, my bad.
No, that's right, I just, I remember the first time we went through this line by line, I'm like, what are we doing, so.
No, and I, I really don't think we should be, I think, let's let the committee do that, and we can look at the final results, just.
Yeah.
I don't look at every, every, it's a ream of paper that gets purchased either, but we look at the.
Right, the overall, yeah, yeah, okay, that's all I have.
This should be a consent agenda item.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
All right, thanks, Wes.
Maybe I should have started with that.
All right, that brings us back around to public comment, has there been any additional public comment? All right, and future meeting dates, June 15th, 2022, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the LRC of Howzer, the board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00. July 6th, 2022, committee of the whole meeting, consider cancellation of this meeting, generally.
So typically, we don't meet during that, it's always falls around the fourth or June.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, some of us might be out of town. Perfect.
He was, he was ready to be there, right?
Perfect.
You wanted to be here in the fourth, right? But I think, I think I have senioritis, I'm just calling what it is. Entering my last year as a board member, I'm feeling it.
Especially with stipends now, we, we're a little bit traumatized.
Senior skip days coming up.
So, well, so, I, I think again, generally, we do not meet around the 4th of July, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I, I don't think there's any, there's any delay.
I don't think there's anything pressing, we can take care of things on the June 15th and the July regular meeting, so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll consider that one canceled. July 20th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Howzer LRC, the board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, return to open session at 7:00. August 3rd, board self-evaluation, Howzer Learning Resource Center, 5 to 9:00 PM.
And really, that should say self-evaluation and goal setting, so self-evaluation is a closed-session item with the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then there will be an open-session goal-setting with the board and the administrative team.
Right, right.
So please make sure you're in town for that.
Yes, I have that to look forward to.
No senior skip dates.
Not that date, not that date. All right, well, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.